Hi, Ralph.
So we're here. We fought for days and came in hard and fast. We fought for days. We should both do this in a half an hour. It's the first place.
There you go.
So, uh, excited to do that one?
Yeah.
But that's a, what's the change? No, it works.
It's a big challenge. We're trying to figure it out, you know? Nope, been busy here so.
Probably don't get no, uh, two or three calls anymore.
No. I still get a couple, but that is me. That's Harvey now, really. He's doing a great job.
I tell you one thing, I wish if I was working for a teenager. I sure wish he had that caller ID.
Exactly.
So, but I hope for, you know, two o'clock in the morning, you just need that something.
Bad man.
Do whatever it is. But it get up and there it is. Phone. I answered the phone and they clicked it, you know, over that caller ID.
I had to call them back.
Let's all back. Man, it's like to your mother. We got through it already.
Yeah. I'm still hanging, you know? Yeah, so if I could pull north of us and south of us.
Yeah.
So you're still talking about wind.
We could use some random.
Oh, yeah, we could use random.
Don't want, uh, don't want that hail either.
Hello?
How are you? Well, I listen, you saw a car here, it should have gotten to the corner. Law five hail. Breaking the windshield.
No. You know, the vehicles are making trouble, okay?
Yeah.
This dog. Crawl in there, work on the engine.
Right, now they got, uh, the only thing I do at mine is change your world.
Yeah, no frame. Yeah. Cheap babies.
The, the big improvement though is, uh, getting rid of that carburetor, the true rejection. Uh, people always thought it was cheap. Yeah. I remember the old age, you know, dealing with vehicles, you might have to pump the accelerator three times because you got a start. Or maybe just once is such a joke.
But that's how you do your, do your thing, right? Do that the way you're all the way out. Ready for a gas?
Yeah.
Can kiss for you.
Yeah, my dad said, because he broke down his car, so I mean, he said, hey, you can tear the whole car apart. I can sit this up in front. Now, metric and everything. I'll tell you a quick story. Gets down very strange. We caught a chicken. That would have been killing. All fixed it, you know? It also killed oxygen. I said, I think I would have drove for a little ride.
Yeah, saying you have a mission.
I had to laugh when he told me that. I said, well, you know, sometimes you have those moments where you're not sleeping properly.
Yeah.
The topic.
Cover? It's like Jason Rave and they got everything. They have so much. We don't have. No. You need to change. We're supposed to treat people.
Hello? Welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission, Monday, June thirteenth. Whenever you want. Well, I'd like to call the board of the meeting of the Buchanan City Commission, Monday, June thirteenth. It is seven oh. Um, you join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We roll, please.
Madison?
Here.
Eden? Dowey?
Here.
Money?
Present.
Swen?
Here.
And Joe Horn.
I move to amend the agenda to remove all items of business and also to update the set agenda at section C so that the total amount of expenditures being approved is one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five and sixty-seven cents.
Thank you, is there support?
This is my out support.
Dowey?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to public comment on agenda items only, if you'd like to make a public comment, please be required in the poll, state your name and for the minister. Is there anyone who should make a public comment?
I'll hold for this.
No, I'm sorry. I will need to approve the amended agenda, I'm sorry.
I will need to approve the agenda as an item.
Is there support?
And is my out support that on stage?
Keep your vote call?
Dowey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Here.
Sorry, moving, moving parts. Back to public count, Mr. Gagneski?
Dan Gianski, one oh three North Detroit, Buchanan, Michigan. I've got several, I really want you to look at this extension of the five thousand dollar automatic or discretionary spending by your city manager. I didn't agree with it when I was a commissioner. They raised it from a thousand dollars to five thousand dollars when they fired the city manager over spending too much on computers. But, um, as a commissioner, I'd like to see a lower to full three. I was going to say four, but three. And this has not really taken away much power, but it's reducing the power a little bit. And the other thing, SMACUS, they're down here wanting a lot of money. I suggested postcards six years ago, or an extreme, visiting the senior centers here in Buchanan or Niles and handing out registrations for membership, kinda like selling insurance policies. I've never seen anything like that done. It's just too easy to come down here. And it's not just SMACUS, I'm not just picking on SMACUS. Everybody in Buchanan comes down here with their hand held out, expecting the taxpayer to bail them out. And the taxpayers are really getting tired of it, you know? Especially when we don't see too much reciprocated back to the taxpayers. And I mean, I know it's expensive and all that, but there's got to be things that these community functions can do to raise funds without actually asking the taxpayers, you know? I'd really like to see them do the postcard thing, I really would, Shaw. I've tried very hard, you know? Send it to all the residents and see what kind of reply. If they don't want to spend the money on postcards, do a senior center at the Niles and the Buchanan Senior Center and see how many people actually sign up. Because I think it's fifty dollars a year or forty dollars a year. I signed up one year and never got a reminder for the following year, so that shows you what you're doing with it.
Thank you. Thank you, is there anyone else who should make a public count?
Uh, yes, my name is Monroly May, I'm from one eighteen Sherwood Parkway. And I'm actually here to rebuild to what he just said. Um, as far as the five thousand dollars is concerned, I think that's absolutely fine. We have a lawyer that's actually city, because it's a city manager, she knows exactly what she's doing and she's capable. And as far as, um, SMACUS is concerned, they come twice a week to the Buchanan Senior Center and probably twice a week to the Nile Senior Center. They're very much in, they're very much in tune as to what we're doing. And they've tried the postcards, it doesn't really work. So I think that's why they've chosen something different, um, and we couldn't do without them, so thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who should make a public count? Okay, let's, files. Okay. Stay, no one else wants to move on to the consent agenda? We update.
Oh, you have amended minutes that were provided.
Oh.
I move to approve the updated set agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there support? This is my out support. We roll call, please?
Just one second on that. Um, appreciate the amended minutes coming out, I didn't see the comment, maybe I didn't say that in the meeting related to no additions to staff until the amended budget came out.
It says no additions.
Did it say that, okay, then I'm fine with that, I just thank you for clarifying. I can circle back. That's all, I just wanted to get heard, sorry.
We roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All right, skip the line from the form. Why don't Grace nonprofit specialty license requests?
Hi, thank you, I'm Rick Etteagla, operator of cannabis wellness at one twenty one Street, Buchanan. And I'd like to thank you commissioners and thank you staff at the city Buchanan for allowing me to present today and, um, we're obviously trying to make this event happen. It's been almost four years since I began engaging with commissioners and community leaders here to consider the sale and production of cannabis in Buchanan and specifically in the central business district. My past experience in Ann Arbor has showed us how cannabis can be integrated into the community and be a powerful tool for economic development, revitalization, and supporting a sense of community. Our brand of cannabis is rooted in principles of teamwork, empowering individuals, strengthening communities. We strive to be approachable, caring, compassionate, and positive changers. While Ila Grace Corporation is a five oh one C three formed by myself, Anthony Hauser, and Monroly May. Ila is Anthony's daughter six, Grace is my daughter twelve. Our hope is that we're going to raise money to provide amenities for the community where funding is not perfect enough. The first of these efforts is going to be the event that we're holding on July. We have five bands scheduled to perform, we have food trucks, we're hoping that, um, we can have a beer garden to supplement our fundraising efforts. We're going to try to manage the amount of people that show up to the event, it's the fourth of July weekend, generally pretty slow in town, everybody is off. We're looking at this as a opportunity to celebrate Buchanan or Buchanan. It's gonna be free, it's gonna be family friendly, it's gonna be local, all the bands are local, this is local, hopefully, the beer scene will be local. It's not a cannabis event. Specifically, our goal is to raise enough money to place a sport court, possibly in one of the city parks. Something that, uh, has been easy identified, but the funding may not. It's brought to my attention that, uh, you know, youth from the ages of eight to sixteen really lack places to go and engage. Maybe a basketball court or a pickleball court combined would be a nice addition to the park. So, I'm here tonight asking for you to consider us to operate beer garden at a location, not on the commons, but near the commons, while the music programming is ongoing, to be operated by a representative professional operator. So I'm here to answer any questions and hopefully, um, get your vote for consideration.
Does anybody have any questions?
Well, we've tried a couple of these projects, uh, I think in the past. Uh, have you talked to the local church that's right there on that, that corner because there was a fence prior to this, it's been a few years back, that, you know, there was a lot of opposition from like the Methodist church that's right there.
Yeah, I believe so.
Have you, have you talked to those folks?
And, um.
Actually, it's something about this church.
What?
It's the, um, it's the one on, uh, on Oak Street.
Right across from the senior center, right across from the senior center, I can't.
And when we did this at the chamber, three, I mean, we did it for three years straight, they'd never objected, they don't sign. So.
If they object, we have an option as far as moving the, um, the location possibly next to Gustafson's, where, you know, next to the parking lot also.
Well, I think, uh.
If there's an objection, you know?
What? Then I'll refer to, uh, Mr. Gagnes. I thought that one time, didn't we have to go over into Neil's old parking lot over in there and, and secure that? Uh, you know, because of the objection from the church, but that's been, that's been some years back.
That was many years back.
Yeah.
And then we did Harvest Festival for the chamber.
Okay.
And at that time, we actually had it at right at the, um, stage. And they were fine with it. But of course, we have a different pastor now, so we need to figure out whether or not.
That was my concern, and then, uh, and then the, uh, fencing, which would have to be.
Double fenced.
Uh, double fenced and.
And the chamber has agreed to give us their fencing that, um, that we could use for that purpose.
There used to be a lot of that around here somewhere.
Yeah, we have a hundred and twenty of them.
Can we, uh, go over or achieve who apparently has some, do you?
Go ahead, yeah. So, per the liquor license, since the church is in that vicinity, you still have to talk to the pastor there to secure permission or if they have a board, you still have to do that per the liquor license requirement.
And we did that. We're just waiting on their response.
Okay. So that's just part of the process that they have to sign on right off on that before we can sign off.
And I know that, you know, it's going to come to you for approval, have you seen any kind of plans or maps or, or?
I saw the same thing that you did. Uh, we were aware of it about the same time that the commission was. So, one of the things that we want to do, you know, I, I'm pretty concerned about how many people attend, right? And so, really the plan is, it's not about how many people we get to attend, it's about how much money we can raise. And so, what I'm going to do is leverage my, you know, my network to donate and not necessarily show up. It's a party really for Buchanan and it's gonna be free, it's hopefully, everybody's gonna come, they're gonna, I take, I hope you guys, um, show up, grab a beer, make some donation. We're gonna take suggested donations, so we'll provide enticements or encouragements to, you know, make that donation.
It seems like the last time that that happened, I, I want to say it was for Rocket Football, had a had a beer, had a, had a beer garden, maybe four or five years ago, at the common, um, in a fenced in area, it, it seemed like it went off without a hitch. And, and I would be in favor of allowing you to do that as long as all your eyes are dotted and teeth are crossed and the police chief is happy with your plan and all that good stuff.
Appreciate it, you know, again, it's not about how many people we get to show up, because I think that we can leverage, um, fundraising in a different way. But it'll be a fun event, it'll be great if people come out just in case.
Yeah, I think it'd be a, a great event for the community based on our conversation, I think.
We're gonna try to keep it low key, we're not gonna really, you know, promote the fact that, you know, come on out. We're gonna give them, you know, little carrots and little links so that, you know, we can collect five, ten dollars at the top.
I think it'd be interesting, you think? It's red by the weekend.
I know, I know.
I think it would be appreciated by that.
But it closes on Sunday, you know, so, and our, our event is Sunday, so.
So I think it'd be important to open the community, just have a follow up with everybody so we can announce how much you're able to raise from the event. That'd be really important, but.
Absolutely. We're excited, it's, uh, you know what? It's kinda like what we did with our business, um, it's a startup, but we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Did, did you have any questions or comments or concerns?
I would like to sit down with you and just have a conversation so we understand exactly what's going on.
Absolutely.
If you could give us a call tomorrow at some time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We'll just sit down and go over it so we understand exactly what it is, appreciate that.
I can come down to the, uh, to the station tomorrow if you, that would probably be.
Yep, that'd be great, thank you.
Maybe, um, eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty. Yes, money, I would move to approve the Ila Grace event as presented and authorize the acting chief of police to sign, uh, the special liquor license application.
Thank you, is there support?
Awesome.
Thank you, can we roll call, please?
Thank you so much.
Swen?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Eric?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the SMACUS, have you scored?
Yeah, I'm not Brian Scribner, sorry, he's, uh, at the Nile City event, he was detained, so. Uh, my name is Josh Kay, I'm the operations manager at Southwest Michigan Community Ambulance Service. Um, I've actually been at SMACUS for.
I'm sorry, would you mind going?
I can, but I got a.
Oh, you have a.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I can be loud. Is this? No, say it all.
No.
I'll say it, it's okay. So. Um, my name is Josh Kay, like I said, I'm not operating manager at SMACUS. Um, we are coming to you today, it is, uh, we're going to renew, our, our SAD is up for renewal. It's been a five year renewal. And this year, um, we are asking for an increase in our SAD. So, basically what we want, everybody to know, our communities to know, is that SMACUS is not in poor financial shape. SMACUS is actually in probably the best managed shape it's been in a long time. Um, we've, we've worked harder to work with our building company, work with our teams, work with our hospitals, to really make sure that we provide this community with a very financially stable ambulance service. And we've basically gone twenty-five years, um, without an increase in our SAD. It's been twenty dollars for the last twenty-five years, and that's a year per parcel. The only thing we changed was, I think last year or five years ago, we incorporated abandoned parcels in there. So, all the parcels were included where it wasn't before. So, uh, the reason we're coming to you guys is because our industry is, is in a crisis right now, um, staffing crisis. I think a lot of people across the country is having staffing crisis. And, you know, one of the reasons for that staffing crisis is, is there's, it's just, uh, a shortage of EMS personnel, EMTs, and paramedics across the country. Michigan's not exempt from that. Angela Madden, who is our director of Michigan Association of Ambulance Services, actually put out a notice last week that the recruit pool is actually almost at zero right now for, for EMTs and paramedics in this state of Michigan. So, there was a thousand medic shortfall last year, they predict a thirty percent attrition rate over the next few years. And there's only about, this is three hundred, but I think, I think that updated numbers are about a hundred and seventy-five people in the state that are actually in classes to become paramedics. So to become paramedic takes about two years and about three to four months of internship, so two and a half years of your life. And then when you come to SMACUS, we can only pay a twelve dollars and fifty-six cents an hour to start. So that is your, you're the professional that comes to your house and basically to save your life, they're getting paid twelve dollars and fifty-six cents an hour to start. So, and it's happening across the nation, um, everybody, everybody is a shortage right now of paramedics, EMTs. And if we look at our wage comparison, so the first, on the very left-hand side, is actually our wages. Our paramedics come in, they start at twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents an hour after their class or after their schooling. And our top out is eighteen dollars and three cents an hour. So that's, I have been in EMS almost thirty years, that's where I left when I, before I became operations manager, I was at like seventeen dollars an hour. So, Medic One, which is just north of us, and then Vivums, which is Van Deuren EMS, which is up in Van Deuren area, um, they're obviously much higher. Medics at three seventy-eight or thirteen seventy-eight, and Vivums is at seventeen dollars and fourteen cents to start. And their, their cap wages are twenty-five. So, we're, we're very far behind, um, in our wages, and that's the main reason we're, we're wanting to increase this. And the other reasons are, we have an aging fleet, you know, our, our fuel costs were sixty-five thousand last year, they're a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty thousand this year, that's just for fuel in the ambulances. We're also competing for people across the state of Michigan because the shortage is, is so widespread now that this pool of people, to attract these people, MedStar, which is over by the tourist, is starting EMTs at twenty-four dollars an hour, and they're providing all of their training, and they're having, giving them a forty-hour work week and work into their schedule. We have people that are, are sending out three thousand dollar signup bonuses, there was actually a company at the Northern Michigan that offered fifteen thousand dollar signing bonus for a paramedic and they never got anybody. No, no one even applied. And I've got, on the right-hand side, you can't really see it very well, but it's nineteen fifty-five to twenty-four dollars per hour for EMTs, twenty-four to thirty dollars an hour for paramedics. So, we've worked, like I said, we've worked really hard to accrue ability processes, we've worked with the communities. We just want to continue to provide this service that we, you guys are used to, communities used to. We've also, through the last, you know, however many years, ten years or so, we've tried not to increase the funding because we know how, you know, we know how it is. I mean, no one mustn't pay more taxes. I sympathize, I just bought a house in Buchanan City. I know how your taxes are. But I don't want to do that to anybody, you know, but we just are at the point where it, it's really at a crisis step. We cannot go any further and attract the individuals that we need to attract without some, without an assessment, without increasing assessment. And we've basically, what we're doing, just a little explanation of how we do this. Twenty twenty-one, we built five thou, or five million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So, if we collected that much, we wouldn't have issue, we wouldn't be here right now. Unfortunately, we only collect about forty-five percent of that, and that is because it's contractual write-offs with Medicare, Medicaid, CMS, all the insurance companies, that's all you're gonna get. So, we basically only collected about two point two million dollars of that money. Now, there is, you know, people out there say, well, just raise your rates, well, if we can raise our rates to a million dollars a patient, we're still only gonna get so much from insurance companies, we can't change that. So unfortunately, we cannot go out and raise our rates to, to earn more money, so this is really the only way that we can fund our, our service. So, our expenses were two point seven million last year, twenty twenty-one, our revenue was only two point three million, and the assessment that we did, the current assessment that we did, put us at about two point eight million, so that's only about a hundred thousand dollars difference, that's, it's a razor-thin line for us, you know, and we did our best to try to keep those expenses down. You know, basically, when you pay eighty-four percent to your people, because you have to have good people, to their sixteen percent is other expenses, that's fuel, that's, you know, supplies. We all know the supplies are supply chain issues, you know, I was paying six dollars a box for gloves, I'm now paying almost twenty dollars a box for gloves, so I mean, it is, it just, you know, it compounds, so. So basically, we just wanted to say, you know, we are your community provider, we want to continue to be your community provider, every dime that we get goes into, you know, the quality of life in our communities, and we've been in the community since nineteen seventy-six, so our ask is, it's a tiered ask, so in your first year, you would go from twenty dollars to thirty dollars, and then every subsequent year after that, it goes up five dollars to a cap of fifty dollars at the end of five years. And I know that there's, some people will say we're asking for a ton of money, but as of right now, you pay a dollar sixty a month for ambulance service, after the five years is up, you'll pay a little over four dollars a month for ambulance service. So, yeah, it is a big increase, if you look at it percentage-wise, but if you look at it, it's, it's as cheap as a cup of coffee a month, to make sure that when you call nine one one, there's an ambulance that's gonna show up at your door, we train professionals in, in good equipment, and an ambulance that will get there, so. And you guys, I don't have anything, once if you guys got questions or.
I have a few questions for you, so I've been talking to some of our neighboring municipals that you've already had some conversations with. So, I guess my first question wasn't on my list, but it came up in your presentations, and what are the funding mechanisms for Medic One in, in here and right now?
So funding.
With a lower population base than we do.
Medic One has the same, like, their municipality owned, and they've been going to their municipalities over the past several years, asking for percentage increases over those years. I think they, I think they vary from anywhere to three to five percent, as high as seven percent a year that they've gone to them over the past twenty-seven years.
So, do they now use the same funding mechanism in terms of price per parcel to fund themselves?
I honestly, I don't know, I don't know, I don't have any answer left for it.
Do you know what their collection rates are?
The same, the same. They have, across the board, in those services, really, that's about what we collect, it's between forty-five and forty-six percent, that's, that's forty-six, forty-seven percent is really good. Sorry, Bevums, the other one, is actually owned by a hospital, it's owned by France and Hospital, but they do receive a one and a half million dollar assessment every year from their, to provide that.
This one may be more for Heather, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure we're making a good decision this morning, honey, what's, what's the difference between a special assessment and this being a millage proposal?
So, a special assessment is similar to a tax, but it's different in the way that it is spread out, um, the tax applies to your taxable value of your property, whereas the special assessment is generally on a per parcel basis, and is defined, like, for instance, our millage, our general operating village is as it sounds, we can spend it on general expenditures, whereas in this instance, this is a special village with a special dedicated purpose for those funds, per parcel that are collected, to be spent just solely on this specific purpose.
So, when I look at it from a per parcel standpoint, I think about our neighbors, not necessarily as much of the impact on Buchanan, but I know this came up in your Bertrand and Niles Township conversations on, like, the farmers own multiple parcels, and, you know, this is causing their rates to jump, some of them more than three thousand dollars per individual, which is sizable to that. Can I just think about, well, how equitable is the way we enforce the collection, um, which caused me to think about, well, who's the number one user of the service? And I gotta imagine, since I haven't seen call rates or anything, that it's gotta be Niles by a mile because of their pure, their population base. And are we paying to subsidize Niles when they're the primary user of the service?
I would have to, I would look at the numbers, but I would honestly say, Niles is probably twenty-four percent, you guys are probably eighteen percent, seventeen, eighteen percent. And if we looked at it, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, so I don't hold any notes, but last time I looked at it, Niles City was not terribly far behind you guys.
So that's an interesting question then, right, they, they tripled the amount of people, maybe quadrupled, but we're, we're using that level of the service?
I, like I said, I'd have to really look, but I, because I don't have those exact numbers, but it's, I'd say you're probably maybe ten percent behind them. And, you know, as far as, it costs, it costs more money for us to cover farmland, because we don't run calls on farmland.
Right.
So it just costs more money for us to, to provide that, you know, the costs are that easy for them, versus the cities.
Well, same thing goes to the industrial areas, I would imagine industrial communities use it disproportionately residential.
Exactly.
But yet they're paying the same rate.
Same rate, same, but like I said, and like I said, the farmers, and, and I, you know, we understand, and when we went through, we did this, the parcel change, I wasn't here for that.
Sure.
I don't know, you know, what that was about, um, but we did look into trying to put a parcel cap on it, so these people that had multiple parcels weren't, weren't impacted more than via the lawyer, the legal, the attorney, basically sentenced it out possible, so it has to be all or nothing. But yeah, we get, we completely understand where they're coming from, you know, and like I said, we would work with them to do whatever we could to help them with that.
Uh, I got, I have a couple other ones, but kinda, you kinda see where my head's at right now, I'm having a hard time making sure we're getting the best value for assistance we can, and, and sorry, your boss doesn't hear your answer, so, but it doesn't seem proportional for what we're paying, I think you guys need to raise, there's no question there, is it more than double what you're getting now over the next four years? That's, you know, we're having a lot of citizen response on what we're doing tax-wise right now, it's very, very difficult, um, and we've got upcoming proposals on our citizens, you might not be aware of these.
I worry about.
Twenty-four million dollar water project, DPD, and so we got a list of things that are impacting them right now, so we gotta pay real close attention to fifty dollars a parcel. Heather, maybe, does this make more sense as a ballot proposal issue, is it not covered by that, to allow people to vote on it, since there's so much coming down at them right now?
So, I, I'm not sure that that's something we could do independently, we would have to form a separate authority in order to do it that way, is my understanding of that, if we were gonna be the ones behind that.
And maybe since my peers, as far as I know, they haven't had conversations with Niles or Bertrand yet, but if you could come and give some recap on how those meetings went, since they don't necessarily sound like they were unanimous.
It was not unanimous, um, we met resistance basically with two individuals on the outreach board, all of those individuals on multiple parcels. The, the rest of the board was, I think, was in our favor, but it's, like I said, we met resistance because of, it impacts them, you know, and I get that, like I said, I completely understand that aspect of it, you know, and, like I said, we tried to mitigate that somehow, but we just, we couldn't, and like I said, it, it costs more for us to cover these parcels, because most of the parcels are all farmed, you know, and it just costs more money to do that, but I understand that, but like I said, the majority, and I think the majority of the individuals on both those boards were in favor of it, other than the couple that had multiple parcels.
Commissioner Swann has brought up a couple of questions, um, if in fact, if you could get those answers for us and bring them back to us, would that be too much of a situation to ask?
What, what to answer would you like?
Well, um.
The, the percentages and stuff?
Yeah, those kind of things, just, just for my possible clarity and to see where, you know, the other communities are at.
Yeah, I don't, but we're not asking, we're asking for the same amount from everybody, as far as the tax funding goes, so it's not like we're gonna ask you guys or Niles City for more money, they're asking for you guys, or you guys are working for them, it's the same across the board, you know, and I guess, as far as call buying goes, is the call buying has always been what it's been, I guess, I'm not really a hundred percent sure.
Has it always been equitable, is a hard question.
I'm not just.
I'm not sure how you can answer that, honestly.
Like, if the number of individuals in that community, how much they're using, shouldn't they proportionally pay for the service more, in my, that's where I'm going from.
No, I mean, I, I understand the question, I'm just putting myself in his shoes, trying to figure out how you can answer that, I, I.
I, I don't, I mean, I mean, we can only look at it from a percentage point, but I mean, that, I don't know that that really means you're not getting the money it's worth, not really.
Right, I mean, I mean, that's kinda where my head goes right away, is to like the postal service, every time there's a, a raise in the crisis stance, people have a connection, but you figure out how to get a letter from here to California for a dollar, and I'd love them to know you can do that, so.
I guess that's an elective cost, though, I don't, I don't wanna mail a letter, I send an email.
Well, the first time that you need an ambulance at two o'clock in the morning, which I've had at my house, and if I hadn't, it could have been disastrous, um, I'd be more than happy to pay more than fifty dollars to get that ambulance to my house, so.
I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just trying to justify more than doubling the rate.
Well, I, and I'm just, I mean, if you look, when was the last time we raised, raised twenty-five years?
It was over twenty-five years ago.
I mean.
You need a raise.
Well, I, I mean, we, we really did try to do everything we could to mitigate this, and we're just now facing this, this staffing crisis, and like, right now, four of my people could retire. I'm down a quarter of my people at that one, you know, and I lost someone today, that level, and I don't have, I, I can't go out to our, our, our bank of people and say, yeah, I'll pay you twenty dollars an hour to come here. And that's, that's the biggest problem, is I just can't recruit and retain, my team has worked, you know, through this pandemic, they have gone above and beyond, and, you know, they've, they've stayed there, and they've put their community, you know, up front, and they're tired, you know, they're tired, and they did that for fifteen dollars an hour, you know, fourteen dollars an hour.
Do you have a contingency claim for what happens when you don't have any EMT, I mean, where do you draw from, where do we?
We don't, we go, we have to reduce resources if we don't have anybody, you know, I'm already at the point where I'm running basic life support cards sometimes, because I don't have the medics to work, you know, and it's, I've been doing the schedule, I've been Operation Man for about four years, I've been doing the schedule, and that schedule, like, one little thing could ruin a month of schedule, and like, I don't have anything to fall back on, you know, I've been trying, and we've been, you know, going over state lines, and going as far as we can to try to recruit people and get people, and it just, it's not out there, it's just not there, you know, anybody that owns a business right now knows it, it's just there, it's not out there. We are just very worried that at some point, we're gonna have to reduce our resources, because there's just nobody out there to do this, you know, and we don't wanna do that.
So maybe I should clarify, I, I think you need to raise, I think that's what I'm trying to, with the data you've given us, I'm really having a hard time understanding how you're coming up with more than double what you currently raise, but that's all. If I had some, I mean, you gave us the ten thousand for you, now I gotta answer to twelve hundred households, I don't know why we added another fifty dollars to the tax bill.
Did Brian, did Brian send the budget over, budget numbers?
I saw, cost of labor is eighty-four percent, that doesn't tell me if you do, you sent me your hourly rate, I don't know if you guys get bonuses, I don't know what your per unit cost is, I'm not trying to get two hundred of the weeds, but those are the, those are the questions your partner municipalities have wondered as well, and we're all out here wondering, I guess.
Yeah, and that's something that I can talk to Brian and make sure that we provide, I honestly thought you made a comment, for you guys in here. But, yeah, I mean, I understand exactly where you guys come from, like, you know, we are asking for almost double, for over double, you know, than what it was, and that is gonna provide us with about another eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
Absolutely essential, there's no question, absolutely no question.
How many parcels are we talking about?
I don't know how many parcels you guys have.
So, totally, you guys are going to raise the rate sign?
I, I'm not gonna take a guess, yeah, I don't, I honestly don't know, um, I know Bertrand has sixteen hundred parcels, Niles Township, so they have twenty-seven hundred parcels, I don't know what you guys have, or what Buchanan Township has, um, but I, I know right now, with our twenty dollars, I guess it's, it's probably about twenty thousand parcels, because our twenty dollars gives us about four hundred and, about five hundred thousand dollars, so twenty-five thousand parcels is what I would guess, about that. Answer all my questions.
You still have some, some answers to your percentage questions, and before we.
Yeah, we can certainly.
I would, unless there's some.
Do you have a motion to table?
I would like to do that.
Yeah, how's it work?
It's on the table, matter until the next meeting, we provide a call, a breakdown on costs, please.
Just making.
But please, no, we wanna do, at least, I think, good speaking hours on that, we wanna do something, just trying to figure out how to get to that number.
It's awkward, okay?
Absolutely.
Like I said, I just bought a house in Buchanan, so I'm aware of it.
Thank you.
Welcome to the hearing.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, is there support?
I would support that.
Thank you, can we roll call please?
Pennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, moving on to reports by Department of Cities and Boards, uh, Lee Richard Martin, District of Buchanan Treeprint.
Yep, it's Brian Murphy and Richard Martin. Uh, I put my lock screen, so. Good evening, I'm Brian Murphy, I'm co-Secretary Treasurer of the Buchanan Treeprints, I'd like to introduce my colleagues who are here with me, Richard Barton is the Chairman of Buchanan Treeprints, my co-Secretary Treasurer is Intuit, also with us are our board members, Beth Murphy and John Shaver. So I wanna thank my colleagues for your support tonight, I also want to open this up by thanking the Commission and the city administration for your support of trees in this town. We're a tree community, we're a tree city USA, and we're really grateful that the city has, uh, taken that honor and has committed to trees in our town. One of the ways you've committed to trees is to fund a tree inventory, which was performed earlier this year. Richard's at some point is gonna show you this, but I'd like to talk to you a little bit about what the tree inventory has shown us. But about three years ago, the city agreed to undertake this tree inventory, it was funded by a matching grant from the TNR, Michigan TNR. It was recommended that the first step in developing a tree program for a city would be to do an inventory, so we understand what we have, what the conditions of the trees that we have are, how do we plan appropriately for maintaining and planting trees in our, in our city? The mission of the Tree Friends is simple, we plant and we maintain trees, we're a hundred percent volunteer group, um, in the last few years, we've planted close to a hundred trees in the town, using, how many, Richard? Hundred thirty, that's why Richard's here, hundred and thirty-eight trees in town, um, and according to the, to the inventory that a certified arborist did, in order for us to maintain our tree canopy and to increase diversity of the trees in our town, we need to plant between fifty and sixty trees per year, minimum. That's a big task, um, the city's committed to purchasing, purchasing an auger to help us do that, we have a water tank that's been acquired that we will use to water trees, because it's really important that once you plant them, you water them in the first two years of growing, um, but we also need to make sure that. But we also need to make sure that we are mitigating risk. A big thing that the tree inventory does is it helps us to understand where we as a city are at risk. If a tree could fall down, damage a home, or cause some personal damage, individuals. So, this inventory has identified sixty trees that are in severe need of, of either removal or maintenance. I talked to Mike Baker before this meeting, informed me that they're already taking down some trees, we have to make sure that those trees that he's taking down are ones that were, were identified in this inventory, we're pretty sure they are, they're either dead, or the homeowner is complaining about their, falling on their home. But we need, we need a plan, is what we, Davey has provided us with beginnings of a plan. We're gonna get you all a copy of this so you can read it, it's fourteen pages, but most of it's appendices, the real meat's in the first five pages of the report. We as a committee, the Tree Friends Committee, have recently been put under the auspices of the Planning Commission of this city, so we wanna do coordinate our efforts in planning with the, with the, with the Planning Commission of the city. To that end, we have embarked recently as a, again, a volunteer committee to develop annual operating plan, which is allied with a five-year plan. There's four areas of our plan. One is maintenance, one is planting, one is governance, it's how are we governed in relationship to you, to the Planning Commission, and the third is fundraising and volunteer recruitment, because we wanna build an army of people that are out there helping maintain the trees in our town. But there's only a certain amount of height that you can have go up on a tree if you're a volunteer, anything they can do has to be from the ground. We're gonna have to work in concert with the private public works to make sure that we're coordinating efforts and identifying and using this inventory. At this point, I wanna turn it to Richard, who's gonna show you what this inventory can do. Now, we could spend hours doing that, but Richard's committed, he's gonna try to do this in just a few minutes, right, Richard?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
First of all, I just wanted to mention, the water tank that you mentioned, that didn't cost the city anything, that was loaned to us by Fernwood. One thing that we have discovered in creating an inventory is that it's gotta be updated continuously. We talked to Mike tonight, and he, Mike Baker, and he told us about some trees that he's already removed, AEP removes trees every year, and the city plants trees and we plant trees, so we, we've got to work out a, a thing where we can get monthly reports so that we can keep this up to date. Okay, just, just wanted to mention that. Okay, uh, let's see, I should also mention that we've had this for ten days, maybe, twelve days, something like that. I spent a couple of days working on it and trying to figure out how to present something to you. I may be able to answer your questions and I may not. First of all, if you were to log on to buchananmi treekeepersoftware.com, that'll bring you up to the screen that we see right here, you'd be logged on as a guest. Okay, so for the people in the, the Tree Friends, we've assigned some usernames and passwords, they can get deeper into what can be seen. And I'm going to hopefully be able to demonstrate that. First of all, this is a map that has all of the tree sites in the city of Buchanan. And I asked Richard Murphy, but I wanna ask, oh, there's more people here. This lower part down here, around the industrial park, is that all in this town? Yes. There's no trees out there. Okay. So, I'm logged in as guest, and I can select a tree, I'm just gonna pick a tree here. I can find one all by itself out here on Smith Street. And I click on that tree, and it opens this little box over on the right-hand side, tells me it's a sugar maple, site ID is eight, or nine five five, that's just the, the site as, on the database, it's not an address or anything like that. Then we've got DBH, DBH is a commonly used term, it's diameter and breast height, four and a half foot off the ground, that's where you measure trees. Because a lot of them have a real fluid base, and it makes it difficult to measure. So, I picked a tree, and it tells me it's a sugar maple, now over here, we've got a little icon that looks like an I, an E Y E I, tells you you can see more, and here's more of what is brought up on that site, it's on West Smith, Smith Street. And then if I go back here, it tells us it's a sugar maple and what the diameter at breast height is. Also, this database ties in with Google Maps. And the top picture is an aerial view of the tree in question, and then the picture down below is a street view of the tree in question. I gotta tell you, though, that tying the Google Maps isn't the most accurate. I looked at my house today, and I've got a big, a huge willow tree that hasn't been there in many years, but it still comes up as a picture of my site, so you just have to take that with a grain of salt. Uh, one of the things that you can do, if, uh, I'll be able to do it from more than one tree as I log in, if I click on a tree right now, based on, based on that one tree, here's the money that we are saving each year. Total yearly eco benefits are forty dollars and forty-two cents, water benefits, seven dollars and eighty cents. When we had our major planting last year, it was because of a group named Relief Michigan, which is trying to reduce runoff into the St. Joe River. And one of the ways to do that is by planting trees, because the roots hold the soil. Uh, so they helped us plant forty-eight trees to try to get rid of some of that runoff. The greenhouse gas benefits, it tells you how much CO2 has been sequestered in the tree, and how much has been avoided. I, I have to think that that avoided is what, what the leaves gather from the, the atmosphere. And then air quality benefits, one pound of, of material, uh, particulate matter is, is not hitting the ground. Water benefits, let's see, two hundred and eighty-seven point nine one gallons. And then state energy benefits, trees provide shade so they cool, so you don't, and they also stop the wind, so you don't have to cool your house so much or heat it so much. That's thirteen dollars and forty-three cents, and property benefits, sixteen dollars. It's known that having trees on your property will raise property values, so I'm assuming that's, that's sixteen dollars.
And that's just one tree?
That's just one tree, yes.
We have fifteen hundred and eighty-nine trees that were identified in the inventory.
And I'm gonna log into the database now, right over here, the login.
Should back it, Richard, just hit that key, hit that key or back it.
Oh, I see, oh, okay, alright, key had to be saved, my password, I missed it.
So there's two ways, the public can see this, and like the city have it on the website, but then for the DPW, and for our purposes, we have the login, which allows us to run reports, identify trees, and also then, um, you know, keep it up to date.
I was gonna say, is this updated, what was this?
Oh, yeah, we have to, if we don't update it, we're gonna waste the investment.
Yeah, it won't be any good to us at all if we don't update it.
That's, that's us is the biggest point that we wanna make tonight, with you and with the DPW, is that we've gotta come up with a way to work together to keep this thing updated. Trees that come down, trees planted, identifying bald spots, like Richard said, the industrial park is a bald spot, we have other bald spots. The, the people, the arborists that did this inventory said that we have sit fifty-seven tree, my, trees per mile, which is considered fairly low stock for Michigan communities. In order for us to have a higher stocked amount of trees, we need to more aggressively plant, knowing that we get about, we get two percent attrition of trees per year, just from natural causes, so that's thirty trees a year, just by natural attrition. We take out trees, we need to plant even more trees, we need a plan, we need to work closely together with the, with the DPW, our debt version.
Okay, so we've got all these trees represented by the green dots. And if I go to the search icon right, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, let's try this one down, there we go. Okay, so this brings up, uh, slight quick filters, you know, if I click on this, I've got high-risk prune. And all of a sudden, it tells me that there are sixteen trees in the city of Buchanan that are in need of high-risk pruning. And down here, at the very bottom, on the right-hand side, the number's pretty small on the screen, but it says sixteen total. And if I click on the report window down here, these are those sixteen trees, here's where they are located, um, and here's the name of each of those trees, there's the diameter and the condition of the trees.
Can I, can I say what they, how they define high-risk pruning? Sixteen trees are identified as in need of pruning and presenting a high risk to the public. In order to mitigate some of the risks presented by these trees, it's recommended to remove all dead, dying, decayed, diseased, broken, or otherwise damaged limbs, four inches or greater. They say the only way to have a, a loa, no risk tree canopy, is to have no trees. We have, when you have trees, you have risk, so the purpose of the inventory is to mitigate risk. This is these sixteen trees, and then there are forty-three trees which are identified as in need of removal, because they're high risk for those same reasons that I mentioned.
Now, close this, and come back here, and I can zoom in and zoom out to make it a little more usable for me. Uh, I don't, oh, I do have some trees selected, I've got those high-risk prune trees selected, so I'm gonna go back to the search, and I'm gonna select high-risk removals, and it tells me that we have forty-three trees that should be removed. That's a lot of trees, if we only have fifteen hundred and some to begin with. Once again, I'll click on this, uh, report window, and it tells me which trees are in need of removal. And the condition of those trees, and you can see that there's a bunch of pores, here's the dead one. As I scroll down.
It's a fast tool.
Okay, uh, close this. And we can have a species breakdown of all the trees we have in the city. Let's see. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not, there we go. Train slash prune. You can see that we've got two hundred and three trees total, they're all in yellow up there, the yellow circle around the green, the green ball. We've got two hundred and three trees that are very young and in need of pruning, they might have a branch that's going out here, and if you leave that for ten years, that's just gonna become something that falls off, so we'll have somebody prune that. We have a volunteer now, who we have purchased a pair of loppers for, and we're going to be giving him a list of trees to prune, and he's gonna do that for us as a volunteer. And that's Lane Martin, if, I don't know if anybody knows him, he's my son.
It also has lain to, spearheaded the creation of cor, so it's not just Lane, we have others that are identified to do that.
I was gonna say, does Lane know that he's?
Lane knows his summer vacation is where we take.
It was very important, just at school. Uh, let's see, so I've done my quick filters, and I went to, um, Report Builder. It's right here, they've got some standard reports, and I was able to create, create one with sample tree removal. I have, uh, modified the list of trees we had, and I just put four in there, I, I can find them, I'll change it after tonight, but I have designated those four. And there's those four trees, right there, so we're able to pinpoint what areas we need to work on.
Rich, does, does this include, like, some of those old trees that are out at Folk Ridge Cemetery that just have a?
Probably not, um.
Because, that's a big problem out in, in that area, you know, you, I mean, you go out into the cemetery and there's some old trees there, and, you know.
The contract that we signed was for street trees. These are trees in the city right of way, or that hang over the road. So we had to draw the line somewhere, it cost us.
Right.
Um, they started out doing parks, and we didn't want parks, but they did three or four of the parks before we could stop them, but it didn't matter because we still came in under the number of trees that they estimated that we would have.
Well, we can, we can add trees, and it's just, it's, it's human power.
Well, yeah, I, you know, and, and Mike knows this, I mean, you know, for any of us that walk the cemetery, I mean, there's a lot of those trees, and, and it's, and it's a big problem for, for that cemetery crew on certain days, you know, I mean, you get a storm come, you're there a few, but next day, you've got a problem, so, I was just wondering, because there are a lot of them that are, that are broke, high, high, you know, very high up, and, and I don't even think Mike's got the equipment to be able to go in there and take care of those trees.
They recommend, uh, ongoing evaluation of the, of the inventory in terms of, you're just having people drive the streets slowly, you know, one driver, one observant, to, to do that, also to, uh, after a major storm. Just the city to see what kind of damages been done. It's a lot of work, we know these guys have got so much on their plate, um, we just wanna help to develop a plan with them and work closely so that we can, you know, make sure that we're mitigating risk, also improving the canopy, because we know of all the economic benefits. Richard talked about diversity, we have sixty percent of our trees are maple, so if a maple blight were to come through, we would be, it would be a disaster, so we need to improve the diversity of our canopy. And we really, we, as the volunteer group that is assigned to this task, we need to really ramp up our maintenance plan, in terms of, like Richard said, the, the pruning and watering. We love it, I think there's a buzz in the town about trees, there's a, the kids at the middle school, when they had like a junior treekeepers group. We just planted a bunch of trees at the Otto School, we've got, uh, you know, there's, there's, if you haven't noticed it, we have, but maybe we have confirmation bias, you know, it's, it's the work we love.
In mentioning the schools, last year, we had a major planting at the middle school, and there were forty-eight trees planted, we had a hundred and nine volunteers that day, and a number of them came from the middle school, and then, uh, Mr.
Ryan Francine.
Francine, yes. He told me that they do want to form a club, and, uh, I've talked with him a couple of times about it, but we'd like to offer them some benefits too, we wanna hold classes on tree identification for them, and right now, they are watering the trees. I took a fifty-five gallon drum over to the middle school, they put it up on the stand, got a spigot on the bottom and a place to put water at the top, and I took a dozen milk jugs over to, gallon milk jug, and they use those to water the trees. And I drove by there last week, and I was just amazed at how nice the trees looked, uh, they're, they're doing a good job.
At the Otto School, Beth Murphy donated to the Tree Friends watering cans for each classroom, color-coded the cans with trees, so classrooms are adopting those trees, it's an amazing thing, the kids love the trees. This is what we wanna do, we wanna create tree advocates, people that love trees, we know trees are a pain to maintain, to rake, but the benefits of trees far outweigh those downsides, and, uh, this is a true city, we need to keep it as such.
So this report you're looking at here, I, I really can't see it very well from back there, I can't see it from here. I learned how to create that report in Report Builder, um, and with a little more experience, I think I'll be able to drill down into any of the attributes of the trees, or, we actually created work orders for those trees, to have them removed, so we're, we're gonna be able to use this, and, and I talked to Mike before the meeting, but I'll just mention it again, I had asked him to, he, he was telling me, we've already removed some trees that have been in your inventory, and I said, could we get a monthly report of what you've done with trees? And he was agreed to do that.
He opened up one of our veterans banners today.
And if, if we get the information from him, then we can update the inventory.
Another point that we haven't mentioned is that this is gonna become a layer, Scott Dussel, whoever's been, was involved in our training, uh, the other day. And you were there. It was, you know, and you're going to layer this in with all your other man, I think.
We're gonna try, yes.
We're gonna try. The idea is we want to integrate this thing into the overall plan. That's it. We just want to help.
It was a great tool.
They wanted, uh, the, uh, relief company that donated all the trees. They want, um, I should have lost the train. That happens when you get up here and just BS, I guess. But we did plant a lot of trees. We're getting them watered. And we're working with the city and the city is working with us.
We're developing a budget. We, we're going to develop a budget so that we know how much we expect to spend each year on volunteer recruitment, training, tree planting, maintenance. It's going to take us this year to populate the plan. We've got a format for the plan that the, our committee's reviewed. We're going to populate it as we operate this year. And we're going to really start understanding exactly how much we need to spend, um, what our inflows are, what our outflows are. And I talked to Heather about that in order to be in communication with the cities coming in.
And when we have that plan put together, we, we ask the city for an annual budget for tree planting, tree maintenance. We also have requested, uh, Michigan Gateway Community Foundation. We, we haven't turned it in yet. We've talked to Mike Rowland about it, uh, about getting thirty-five hundred dollars a year from them just for tree planting. So that's where we're at. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks very much. Community Development Director report from Mr. Rich Murphy.
Mayor, members of the public. I just want to commend, uh, Richard and Brian and all the Buchanan tree friends for your excellent work. And I know you were tenacious on getting this grant. It took me a couple of times to get it, but look what it did. It allowed us to have an informed conversation about the economic benefits, the costs, and the reason why, as an economic developer, I see trees as essential infrastructure. So keep up the good work and excellent job on the tree plantings. And I think you engaged Buchanan and certainly, you know, Bombay, a lot of people that are rooting for you and are thinking up for something to advance in that discussion. Commissioners, I'm here today, uh, a couple items. First is, uh, to pitch to you what I see as an important economic development opportunity for Buchanan. It is a public art project that I, I've been talking to you off and on for several months. I think the city was planning, project was planted back on that, uh, very special evening in the Buchanan Common, uh, the world's biggest watch party for Olympian Hannah Roberts when she brought home the silver medal from Tokyo. And if you were there, then I know, uh, you could really put that energy in a bottle. It was special. And, uh, that energy is community pride, but it's, it's also, uh, economic development and potential job creation and business development. And it's, it's, it's a big dose of community pride. So, uh, since then, uh, I've had discussions with some business owners and some, uh, community advocates about a concept to, um, do some public art depicting Hannah Roberts, the Buchanan Olympian in downtown Buchanan. Uh, I have since, uh, received pledges of support from honor finance, uh, from a local building owner, uh, who has agreed to allow us to use the wall, the existing, uh, honor finance building, as well as, uh, I am in discussions with Michigan Gateway Foundation for that to be a partner. Before I came to you, I wanted to make sure that Hannah and her family were, uh, okay with the idea and for me moving forward. So I have been in discussions with Hannah and her family. They do love, love the idea. At the same time, lots of moving parts here. We needed to look at an artist, not only an artist that, uh, is accomplished, but, um, one that I think would fit into Buchanan's downtown and one that Hannah and her family, uh, wanted to work with. So I have, uh, secured all those moving pieces. The last item was to come before you, to ask you for, um, you to be a part in this project and requesting, uh, five thousand dollars towards this mural. It would be, uh, public art, um, is economic development. Anybody that, um, we want to be or that's doing economic development on a high level is investing in public art. And, um, certainly in this case, the fact that we have such a, um, probably one of the most Googled and searched, uh, citizens in Buchanan's history, uh, willing to work with us on this project, uh, who will, uh, likely be attending, uh, be competing at another Olympics in Paris in twenty-twenty-four. Well, we see a really, uh, cool opportunity. So I'm here to request, uh, funding for five thousand dollars for this project and, um, still some moving parts. I gotta work with, um, a concept with the artist and a concept with Hannah. One of the things I'm excited to do is have Hannah and the artist meet each other. And, uh, the artist that we're, uh, have identified with is, is, is named Jeff Zimmerman. He's done some exciting projects, uh, in the Great Lakes, uh, region, in Chicago. And he's really depicted figure, public figures, um, athletes, um, uh, public figures who were, um, uh, women and, um, done it in a special way. So I think, again, I, I, certainly an opportunity that I see coming back in, um, in rate of returns that's way over and above the investment here. So with that, I, I just asking for your support of, of the partnership. And I will be in touch with further updates on the project. But, you know, this type of project, remember, it's, it's kind of captured from beginning to end. So we, the minute the artist starts, we capture with social media. We get Buchanan on the map that way. Then as we approach the Olympics, we can start to do certain campaigns that, you know, depict this, uh, mural. And I, I don't know if anyone's seen, there's a mural in Los Angeles, California of Hannah Roberts. It's about four stories tall across three, uh, bays of a large hotel. So there certainly resonates and, um, just a really cool thing, uh, as we approach twenty-twenty-four in Paris. You know, the plan would be in public art, you always have a beginning, a middle, and a retirement. So there would be a, a creation period, a design period, creation, an enjoyment period, and then a, a period where we would retire the art, um, because we don't want it to be subject to the elements. Not a high quality, uh, depiction. Usually, you know, we can keep an eye on that, but sometimes it's three years, sometimes it's four or five, uh, depending on, uh, the application. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody? Yeah. What's the total cost going to be?
I have, I done it, lined up fifteen thousand dollars right now. And, you know, this, this artist, if you Google him, he's, he's the one that did the Marilyn Monroe, uh, downtown Chicago, the Andy Warhol, uh, kind of multicolored. He's done Ernest Hemingway, uh, murals in, uh, in, uh, Michigan and in Chicago. So fifteen, that's your question, fifteen thousand is our.
Well, I like the idea, but we are just going to test it. Why haven't, so have we reached out to any other artists? Do a price comparison, see where is the right ballpark?
You know, I have not, um, to me, it's really more important that you get an artist who's acclaimed and recognized and, and has Midwest exposure. To paint that entire wall is a skill set that very few people can do. And so there's not like, it's not like you can go out and hire the cheapest guy to do this. You want to do somebody that's going to bring that economic punch. And after a long search, uh, and a lot of artist contacts, I've done several artists, public art projects in, in my former community. And, uh, this, this gentleman, who by the way, his mother lives in Michigan, is one of the reasons he'll do it, is because he, uh, comes back to visit her and, uh, sees a Michigan connection.
So you've never used him before?
I'm sorry?
Have you used him before?
Uh, he's done projects in Michigan City, yes.
You have used him thus? Um, and then when you talk about retirement, um, we're talking in, in our, um, packet, it said two to three years. I know we have, you have an agreement with the building owner for two to three years. That's kind of a long span there. I would like to be more on basis of, you know, when it deteriorates enough. Uh, and then I was wondering what would happen if somebody, if he was a self-built?
He is agreeing, um, that he will keep the mural up for a lot of time. And so, um, we'll have to, I'll have to do a contract with him at some point. Like I said, there's a lot of moving parts here. I gotta confirm the artist. I gotta make sure Hannah and the artists are working together. I gotta go back and reaffirm everybody's financial support. I just need to clear your conceptual financial support, and then I'll be back in touch. I got a lot of other things on my plate, and I just don't want to miss this opportunity to do something that I think have really been Buchanan on that.
Have we reached out to any other, uh, businesses or organizations for quite possibly help with that five thousand dollars?
I have, I identified three organizations. I just thought about a three-legged stool. They could be partners. It gets a little difficult when now other partners are coming in and I, I can't reach out, but I don't want that to be critical to the moving forward. I mean, I'm either going to do this or not at this point because I, I got too, I got too many other things that I got on my plate. And so I just, if I don't do it soon, I'm going to lose the attention span of the artist and Hannah and everybody. So if, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. But I, I will, uh, look, seek opportunities for, uh, more funding, but I don't want that to preclude and decide if that project can even move forward at this point.
Right, Mike, well, I was just going back to what Cameron said, you know? Like I said, there's, I know there's a couple organizations that would probably come up. They could cut this five thousand dollar bill quite possibly in half, you know, or something like that. That's, that's the only thing I would say.
Yeah. You know, I mean.
And I, you know, I mean.
I hear you. To, you know, part of the thing is, you want to build this public art culture, then I kind of do a couple of demonstration projects that plant the seeds and then engage the community. You know, in my former community, we had a public art committee. So they were in charge of installations and projects and rotations and fundraising and leases and things. So we're trying to plant the seed. Sometimes when you plant the seed, you gotta be the demonstrator and, uh, that's where I'm at.
I think that's excellent. First step to enter the vibrant city, have public art and then, I don't want to speak for my peers, but I think in other conversations we've had, it is a direction I continue to focus more on. I'm very happy you got two-thirds of the funding. Or I'm fully secure for the project already. Unless anybody else has a question, I'm happy to make the motion. I'm going to approve Hannah Roberts' mural project. That's five thousand dollar funding request.
Who is this for?
I'll support them.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Weeden?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Luddy?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Carried?
Thank you. It's our pleasure. I appreciate it. Thanks, Richard.
Uh, second item I have is, uh, I have a city Buchanan downtown facade program application that I brought forward to you. You may remember that when I, um, brought these, uh, programs forward, I did leave, uh, a discretionary, um, room for discretion for the commission in certain circumstances, uh, that arguably would provide community benefit. The program is primarily for downtown, commercial, driving, uh, business development downtown. However, the applicants, I have explained to them, um, they, they brought this forward. They asked me, you know, is this an appropriate project to bring forward for discussion? And because of this discretion, uh, I'm bringing it to you to have this discussion with you. As I mentioned to the, uh, the applicants, I, I said, I bring things forward, but I don't vote on, on them. But I do bring them forward to, to have a discussion with you, uh, on what your vision is on how we're going to apply these funds for, for the future. So we have a, um, an, uh, application for the Buchanan area senior center, um, for a facade grant, um, in relation to their, uh, what they're calling the sunroom addition to the Buchanan area senior center. Total, total cost is projected to be a hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred dollars. My understanding is some work has maybe been done, uh, but a lot of the work is, is going to be done this summer. So I, I told them that I would bring the application forward, uh, for your discussion and review and see where we are. And so that's a project. I know that some representatives of the senior center are here.
I just have a question. I guess Adam might be able to address it. So the original intention program was more so an economic development tool for the community? So maybe you can speak to why you think this fits that program?
Well, the program is a facade-based program for commercial buildings. And we're in a commercial building and we provide to over three hundred regular patrons services every day, um, that are essential to their kind of social, physical, mental health. And it is also available for community events. And if you haven't been out, I encourage you to come by the senior center. The work is underway and we should be done by then in the summer. Despite the supply chain problems, we've got the storefront system and they're installing that now. And it really gives you a sense of the, the space. I mean, it's beautiful. And it will be a great addition to the senior center for the seniors and for the community organizations that use the senior center. So as far as economic development, I mean, it's there. People who come to the events at the senior center probably stop in town as well and are shopping. But I guess, I think it's more than that. It's a community benefit. Um, it's really a public space in essence.
And it increases the public space because of what we're doing.
By a thousand, sort of be, you know? And if you step inside it, the, the patio, the covered patio was never used because it was hot and there's bugs and.
We used it once for a retirement party.
Yeah, we did. In fact, the pictures I sent, the application showed that use. Uh, that was due to the pandemic. And the reason we chose, we, we kind of impetus to move forward with this was during the pandemic when we were under attendance restrictions and we could only have ten people in our huge space. And if we had had separate space, many of our rooms are too small to really make a difference. So the ten was, you couldn't even get ten people with social distancing in our library or our craft room. But this, this space is very large. It has cross ventilation on either end. There's sliders that open completely. Every bay has a window that opens, so it's going to have fresh air flow. So when the pandemic hit and we started talking about the, what we could do to increase our capacity when we were under restrictions like that, people said, well, we talked about this, the most logical way to expand would be to enclose the patio, the covered porch. And it's going to be, when you, when you come by, you'll see it's really looking beautiful.
It, it is a separate room.
And it's named after Russell Stevens, who was a longtime supporter. I'm sorry?
I said, it is a separate, separate room.
It could be closed, separated.
So if there were ever to be ten, there could be ten in that room and ten in our room.
And not only that, I'm sorry, I was subpoenaing with the secretary of the board. But not only that, we can have more activities. So we have an extra space that allows us, if we have, for example, chair yoga, we can have another activity in another room. So we have an extra space that allows us, if we have, for example, chair yoga, we can have another activity in another room. So that allows us to serve even more patrons at one time. So we are here to help our community seniors who are rooted within our area of Buchanan and, and help them out and have a place to be and socialize. And like Adam said, you know, mentally, physically, emotionally, have a space that they can call their own. And therefore, that's why we're here.
And we were voted as the number one in very, right?
Yes.
That's super, that was public. But it also is, you can look out the windows and you see the first two tributaries that we planted at the senior center. We planted eight tributaries, and they're beautiful, and they're beautifying the grounds. And I just, if, if you come and see it, you'll see how much of an addition, a beautiful addition to the space it is. It really is.
I think one of the things that it will benefit the seniors that we serve, and being a seventy-nine-year-old senior, I know what services they do offer and I use them, is the fact that there's a place we're going to have, that they can come and sit, whether it's snowfall, rain, heat, whatever. Be comfortable. We've got free coffee pots set in there, free coffee for them. They can sit in that room and be comfortable with other seniors and not feel deprived, not feel like they're using anybody to really feel independent. And that's one of the things that I learned in working with the board. Seeing their independence helps them mentally and physically do the things they need to do. And this really will be a blessing for our seniors.
And it's fighting control. It's a, it's a year round today.
Yeah, that's one of the things.
Rich, is there, is there a dollar amount type of this, either? I didn't see it.
Well, because their project is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that qualifies for the maximum eligibility amount.
Well, I'm looking at this, and we had an intention with the facade program. And if I look at the exclusions, so many of the things in the exclusions were brought up by everyone back here. You know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be wiring, there's gonna be windows, uh, floors and ceilings on the inside. This, this is in the back of the building?
Yeah.
So it's not a true facade. We, we talked about a rear facade grant, I believe, haven't we?
We have discussed putting that together.
But we haven't put anything together yet.
Mr. Doughty, may I ask something?
Can you stand up so I can hear you?
Yes, I can, sir. Uh, when you approach the building from, is it the front yourself?
When you're sitting close to the canvas.
When you're coming up, you will see the beautiful side of the building. So it is a facade. You can see it. And that is just not the front of the building, it's just the backside of the building. So I, I would consider it a facade. Thank you.
Rich, what is the, the purpose of the, uh, facade grant? What are we hoping to gain from?
The primary, primary purpose outlined in paragraph one is to promote historic preservation and continued use and maintenance and control of commercial and mixed-use buildings in the central business district, intended out of property in order commercial tenants to rehabilitate and restore their visible exterior of existing structure in a way that matches the pleasing aesthetics that are historically significant downtown. So it has been a, you know, I said that at the beginning, the primary cause was that, uh, or primary purpose was downtown. But I know it, I anticipated, um, instances like we have tonight, and I wanted to be able to defer to the will of the commission and not bring projects that you guys might have an appetite for, never for, or may not. So I did put that discretionary clause, Heather and I, and I think a few commissioners, uh, that I discussed with, uh, we put that discretionary clause because we foresaw discussions like this.
You know, it puts us in a difficult place because we have to be the ones who say yes or no depending on what people are thinking. Um, and I, I guess I'll be the bad guy saying what I'm about to say, but I love the senior center. Let me just start with that. And I love the services you provide. I, I think that the idea of the incentive program, and I don't wanna speak for the rest of them, but I'm, I'm fairly sure that we are all along the same wise thinking, that this would be used downtown to help rehabilitate some of the old buildings that are outdated, rundown, eradicated. And to be eligible for downtown facade training alone, the building should meet all of the following criteria. The building must be used in an important commercial purposes and located within the central business district, or is authorized by us. But, uh, um... I think, when I think of your building, and you have a lovely building, um, I, I think it's in much better shape though than a lot of the other buildings and the folks who the government has space for money. Um, that's just anywhere my head goes.
Can I add something to that? We didn't always have this beautiful building that, um, McDonald, uh, Runway that built us. And we have never received any help from the city. And the reason that we've never received any help from the city is because they've always said, well, that's taxidermy. And you have enough money. But most of the money that's raised for this, all of the money that's raised for this is all senior money. It is all money from, from our seniors. Uh, and I think you know how much they get paid. So it seems to me that although this may be a building, and it's not downtown, and it's a new building, a fairly new building, from two thousand ten, we've never asked for help. We've never received help. And I think that it would mean a lot for our seniors to know that the city supports them. And that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Is there another question?
Rich, did you have any concerns over precedents when you thought of this project?
Well, I mean.
Setting a precedent.
It's, uh, I, I, I knew at some point we would have this discussion. I just didn't wanna be the one that, um, made decision policy decisions in kind of an area that is kind of a gray area as far as, um, community benefit goes anywhere. So, yeah, I mean, it, it, there's, uh, I wouldn't be asking, well, improve this, what other projects outside? Consider, um... I mean, it's, it's, this is a tough one because, you know, I, I, I did have a discussion with Adam about it, and I'm like, to me, this, no one disagrees that this senior center gives, uh, excellent, amazing benefit on a high level. And so, to me, it's worthy of bringing it forward for the discussion. And that's, that's my role. I bring it forward, and I did, I, I, you know, I didn't let them know I don't vote. I don't vote.
You know, I don't think that's fair of it for anybody to think that you should. I, you're here to do economic development. That's what you do. The decision would be up to us. I understand your situation. I appreciate it. Any questions?
If this grant is an ongoing grant, what do you have?
We gotta step up to the...
Grant's getting loud.
Hard to stand up.
If this particular grant is an ongoing grant, and if the senior center is allowed to get this grant, what are we taking away from any business, say, downtown that would perhaps go to apply for this grant in the future? I'm not understanding that.
Well, it's not necessarily a, a... You know, we're, we're not the gateway corporation. We don't have a ton of money. We have a limited amount of money in this grant program.
Cause I understand that, but, um, it is a grant that is an ongoing grant, right? So anyone can apply for it any time, you know, in one year, no, their own two years or whatever. So it's not just one pot of money that if you take from it, it's going to affect someone else.
Well, actually, that's not. Um, there's been specific dollars that have been allocated to the program, but those aren't ongoing dollars that are budgeted from like the tax base. Like, we funded it off of, right now it's been funded out of the cannabis money up to this point, and maybe by missing some other contributions. It's primarily campus money and some ARCA funds, maybe. So those aren't, I mean, we don't know what that's gonna be annually. So to say that's gonna be here next year, it might not be there. We have specific targeted, uh, not specific projects and say, but the focus areas of the community, which communities have all that input on.
So have they had the businesses approach you for this grant?
We have. We have, we have, we've actually...
This was in the, in the...
Good examples. I mean, Sweet Shop, is there a great example?
Sweet Shop, Red Bull Hardware. We did all of the, you know, they put a new awnings and new lights and sign it in. The, the Sweet Shop.
So I guess I, I wanna make a few points. One, we qualify for the grant for our commercial facility. This is a facade improvement. We're using storefront system, actually, which is the same thing that downtown businesses use. Our seniors have already donated a quarter of the cost. Over forty thousand have been donated by the seniors. That's not a well they can, you can keep going to that can, you know, supply all of the funds for this project. And it is a community use. This weekend, there was a bucketing's party at the senior center. Last weekend, there was a... There was a seniors birthday party. I can't remember the person, but every, almost every weekend, there's an event at the senior center.
It is the largest event. I mean, it's the largest place of Buchanan to have.
This is expanding that space. Um, so I really encourage you to consider seriously the benefits of this project to the community. Economic development is not just people shopping in stores. It's people coming to an event and then shopping in stores, or people coming to an event and going to a restaurant.
And is Buchanan the nicest city of the U.S.?
That doesn't mean we can give out money to everyone.
We're asking everyone, everybody.
I'm, I'm gonna try and move into this.
I know. You're gonna have to acknowledge me though, Sean, cause you did this. You started this. Go back to Robert's rules. Stop this. Rich should have never brought this to you without discussing it to you prior, because you guys are in between a rock and a hard spot. It's not qualified. Rich knows that.
No, actually, I'm sorry. Now I'm gonna have to, because actually, it, it does qualify. I mean, Rich is right. It has to meet these, these eligibility requirements, or as otherwise authorized by the city commission. So, really, when we dreamt up this plan, it was to fix up old buildings downtown. Or if there were some other entity that wanted to come and ask for money that was not in the downtown, that would be up to us to figure out. I mean, it's not an easy decision that now we're, you know, if we say no, we don't like seniors, if we say yes, we're gonna give money to anybody who comes to the downtown.
We understand. We totally do.
Did Rich reach out to them, or did they reach out to Rich?
We did.
Okay, good. Good to know.
Okay, so, so now, now I would like to just stop the back and forth between us and you, so we can have a discussion.
Like I said, we're in a rock and a hard space here, but I look at this right here several times. It says historic preservation, historically significant. So what qualifies Rich as historic? Where, where's the line?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just gonna go back to my other, my original premise, which was, there's a, a priority purpose with discretion. So if, you know, I kinda wish that maybe this came up earlier than on the floor, we could have maybe, you know, had this discussion table, then you'd have the discussion or something. You know, the, I think I answered that question.
I mean, I, I wanna get rid of the idea that we're not allowed to have tough discussions like that, because that's why we're sitting here, to make hard decisions. So, you know, the idea that we shouldn't be having difficult decisions or discussions because they're difficult is absurd. I mean, I have to tell you that I, I don't think that it qualifies based on, um, our idea of the facade program. I would, I mean, I would be willing to make a small donation to the project because we do appreciate the senior center. I don't know if the rest of my commissioners will be on board with that, but to show you that we care about your facility and that we love what you're doing up there, I, I, I would rather go that route. My fear is that if we, if we do this grant for you, that people are gonna come out with woodwork all over the city asking for money. That's my fear.
I mean, I, I can appreciate the creative way that we're trying to put this together. I really can. I think my reservation simply comes from the fact that, to your point, we're, we're essentially setting a precedent, and, and we're allowing this to become potentially, you know, in worms, that anybody, you said, they can come to the table. And, and the hard part is, is that the way that was discussed tonight, the way this was presented, that we, we had this back and forth, is clearly going to shift a certain way or the, it's inevitable. It's, it's the way it goes, and this is the way it technically should have not been done. It's not this, any disrespect to Rich. It's not just a...
It's great. It's good to be able to talk to you guys this way, don't you think?
We do appreciate that, and I think that we can get in another discussion on that. I think that we don't do any kind of town halls, right, where we can have this back and forth in the dialogue with some of the projects. I don't disagree with you on that. I, I really don't, because I think that's, to some degree, when things get moved forward a little bit faster than if we were to just always have this regimented way of doing things, right? So we can agree on that. You can also clearly see how it gets out of hand, and just like any party, everybody wants to be involved, right? And we can't have that either. So, um, to that point, it really does come down to a precedence, and I think you have a valid point, that you do have individuals who come there and did spend economic money in the city, and then you provide a service. And I even said that to Sean earlier today, and I don't know the numbers, I simply see it from when I pass by, and it is clearly one of the most active senior centers in the area. And I don't know where all of them at, but I know where Niles is at. They don't have anywhere near the cars in the park that, that this senior center does. So, um, thank you for what you do for the senior center, because it's clearly changed since you have arrived. Based on all of our reactions, and I don't think, and I can clearly tell, we are, we, we, this is a difficult decision for us as well. So please know that.
Rich, I got a question for you here. Uh, is there anything just more applicable in the Main Street program?
Main Street is focused more on downtown.
Yes, they, they do a lot more restrictions out there.
Okay, I just, you know, that there was an extension of some kind that, uh, that...
But to, but to your point, and I think you do bring a valid point that people may not be aware of, is they do restrict in the original intent, even though there was a little bit of flexibility, was to restrict it to the central business district, to designated historical buildings. Uh, it's, it's clearly written in there, and I think that the black and white, Monroe, I respect you. I really do.
No, no. I've come to you.
You're out of work.
I've come to you.
Don't tell me, Sean. You're out of work.
I've come to you after we've talked to you about something.
That's fine. And Dan, she's, I understand, Dan, you are as well. So, okay.
Yeah.
We're one of the same. We're one of the same.
Monroe.
We are.
It's, it's getting hot. Agreed. So, that's a little...
What's something with the motion?
We, we appreciate both that you guys are having casual discourse right now, but, and you may not like each other, but for the moment, for the rest of the people in the room. It's okay.
Please, um, okay. So we failed to get a motion, so we're going to move on to the community, or I'm sorry, city treasurer report. City treasurer report.
Good evening, commissioners, members of the public. I'm really pleased.
Hang on. Everybody, can we, just a moment? Is everybody?
I would, I would ask that we be respectful of people we're speaking with.
Thank you. Um, thank you, commissioners, mayor. Thank you, members of the public. Another great city manager. It's my pleasure today, over a thunderous applause, to introduce our new, um, treasurer, Deb Corretts. We're really thrilled to have her. She comes with great experience, over ten years' experience as a treasurer of the city of Fenville. We're extremely fortunate to have her with us this evening, and she forward, so I'll welcome her to our finance team and the KFC.
Do you want to just move right on to the special sharing now, please? I'm going to make a motion to, uh, appoint Deborah Perez as an authorized user and, uh, sign to our call of the city committee accounts. Sean, I'm making that motion. Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Get more help, please.
Will you?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
That was it.
You do?
Here.
Thank you.
I'll just briefly state, um, Watersour Fund net position has last certified nine million eight ninety-seven four oh two. General government net position five billion three twenty-three three ninety-three. We will at our next meeting have a more detailed treasurer report to share with commissioners and public.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move down to the wastewater department update.
Hey, guys.
I'm on no steak.
Hopefully we get to see.
I'm quick.
I might get a lot.
That's my comment.
Yeah, I'm quick, I'm quick.
Correct me, all right. Um, so we're here to do the fiscal review of last year of the new plant, Bill Howl, who, uh, was watching that plant super. Obviously, the guideline over the last year was to start up the new plant. Uh, we actually started it, started the plant up in June of twenty-one. But we were actually still starting equipment going well in the fall and even later. Uh, during that time, we're still running the old plant in parallel, idling and shutting, shutting it down while we're starting the new one up. But for the most part, everything is running really well. Uh, the new plant runs, uh, really smooth, it's reliable. The equipment we have has been great. We've had just a few items, uh, warranty items, probably a dozen minor things that we've had to have fixed, uh, but nothing major. Nothing left that we have to have done this winter or this summer is gonna be, as some years suggested, and, uh, Ferris think that mechanical contractors have to come back up. It's minor stuff. We're talking just small drips that we're containing. It's all scheduled within next month. Um, the efficiency that we're seeing so far, some things that we've, uh, plants allowed us to do. We've reduced one full-time operator at the plant already. We've reduced, uh, weekend and holiday overtime by two-thirds so far. Uh, reduced energy by approximately ten thousand dollars, it looks like, this year, and that's with running both plants, so that's, that's not gonna be a good, that's probably gonna be better this week before. Maintenance was down thirteen thousand so far this year, so that was good. So that was, it's kind of the wrap-up on what happened in the plant. I did wanna say thank you to the city and the commission, and everybody that supported us and, and getting this built. Giving us such a nice place to work. Um, it's, it's a lot more, a lot of process than we had. The old plant really busts on the park, so we, we did a good thing here, and I think it's gonna pay for itself for a long time. That covers the plant. Do you guys have any questions on that for me, though? All right. Leachate, uh, we had a flow increase this fiscal year, uh, about twenty percent. Uh, we're up through May about two million gallons. That's gonna lead to about an increase of sixty thousand dollars for the year in leachate revenue. We've also heard recently from the Southeastern County landfill that they are going to be moving forward on a flow equalization plan. That will also help us out with some efficiency issues with the plants. We're looking forward to getting that done. It's been something we've been working through for about four years since they started their SBR up there, so. We did hear from Tyler on that, that they're moving forward. We re-permitted the landfill, uh, that's the only, our only permitted discharge here on the system right now. We reissued the three-year permit, uh, at the beginning of April. That's what's going on with the landfill. Seppage, we got a plan approval from Eagle last July. We actually got the station built in September and started receiving in October. To this point, we've done a hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred gallons, uh, with a revenue of nine thousand two hundred and ten. Um, so that's what's up with seppage. We did refile for a new discharge permit. It's obviously kind of viable for how we work down there. Everything in there is qualified in what we do. Um, those permits took the last three, four years. Applications are a big deal. That was completed in March. The application ended up being seventy-seven pages. And one of the things we asked to stay for, based on the plant and its capabilities and digital inputs and all the pieces of equipment, was reduce monitoring requirements. So we have a reduced testing schedule. Could potentially save some money in man-hours and lab supplies also there. Um, they sound amenable to that, but until we have our new permit, we'll, we'll go down to the city. So that is kind of the, the high points of what's happened over the last year. Big thing has really been trying to idle that old plant. One of the main reasons we had to do it was our old building's basement's awful. Over the winter, we spent a lot of time and energy trying to equalize those things when it was single digits. And kind of got good at it. I think we have a plan going forward that'll make it easier, but we spent a lot of time messing around with that. We're still in the process of legaling it. But overall, it's been good here. I think, um, start up a lot of times on those digits can cause compliance issues. We answer, month over month, we actually improved our treatment from the old plant, and that almost never happens, so we had a good year, pretty happy. Any questions on any of that?
One question, one comment. So landfill is making a significant investment in flow equalization that, I can't remember how much we're paying for it, but it's like, do you remember? It's like a million dollars, I guess, I feel like. It's, it's a lot of money. So that's too many gray for us over here. Um, we talked about doing some outside treatments, um, more industrial scale. Where are we at in that project?
Right now, PFAS is on hold. You've talked about it. Cameron asks in every turn where I serve or buy, and honestly, if, if it becomes available, like, if we start seeing, well, no, opportunity, we're gonna be catching. Right now, what's going on with PFAS? If we took, we're not at the action level of PFAS yet.
Right.
If we took a load of something and put us at the action level, the implications could be millions of dollars for the city. So we're just kind of trying to walk this, do something with that. So for right now, I, I think we kind of stick with the old plan.
Muskegon's not making it any easier, so we're having some serious issues up there.
I'm surprised by that question, too. Um, do these microphones work?
They, I don't know.
Yeah. Does that work? It didn't. I mean, I see all those speakers in the ceiling back there. I don't know if we're raising our sound.
Cameron, I think the problem is the mics are directional, so you have to speak right into.
I'm just saying, everybody else, I, I have trouble hearing, I don't really know about the, the range, but I got a question for you. Okay, we're raising our waters or rates on the, every taxpayer at the beginning. Um, are we raising rates for Leachate? There we are, Matt, our.
To this point, all the rate increases, and it is important, there's a distinction between rates and taxes. Just, I want to make sure we're careful with that language. But to this point, their rates have always been based, right now, we have a base plus surcharge. Their base rate is based on township prices. So if township goes up, their rates will go up.
So they go up at the same rate as our others, but they pay a surcharge fee because of the toxicity and what they create for them.
And what, how much is that increase over the last five years, I'm saying?
It will be parallel to what our normal rates have been. Um, now that we have this rate structure, it's automatically going to, whenever we adopt a rate increase in the township, that will be applied to. Um, every couple of years, we'll also do, uh, surcharge schedule that the commission adopted about two years ago. We calculate the actual operating cost for surcharge pounds, and we charge them based on what pounds they discharged. So as I said, they have a base volume rate that they pay for water, but then what's in the water, if it exceeds certain levels, we're charging them.
You guys see it?
Yeah.
I think you get it. I don't know. It just, you gotta adapt it like right when I, uh, that rate allocation.
The only other item we have is, we'd like to schedule an open house on August first, um, immediately following the next drunk water scoreboard, from nine to eleven A.M. Which kind of gives us the ability to open the drunk water scoreboard down there, and then do the open house, get two birds and one stone, with one stone, which is kind of tough. So we're hoping that the commission can, can adopt that.
No.
It was our plan.
Yeah, but it's already planned.
Yeah, I think you're good.
All right.
Awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, then we're gonna go to the water department to report. Good evening, commissioners, everyone. Start off here with a brief update. Uh, you want me to read this and just kind of go through it quick?
Give us a quick glance.
All right, um, we have a really good, really good source of water in our shallow lot of fur that runs pretty much everywhere in this area. Um, all of our compliance sampling has been really, really good. We're well in compliance on everything, even with the addition of PFAS and asbestos to our, uh, sampling schedule. Couldn't be happier with the water that we're getting out of that aquifer. The issue right now with pumping is the fact that we've taken well-free off the manganese content of that well. And we don't have a new well with iron treatment online to go along with well five yet. It's in the process. It seems to be moving down the road year to year. But we're in a slightly vulnerable position right now with pumpage. If we're to test positive on, uh, Oklahoma Forum sample with two wells in the same month, then we're gonna be forced to pump well five as our main pumping well for the span of about a week. And we're not going to be providing the citizens with the quality of water that they're used to receive. Well five runs about between point five and point seven parts per million of iron, which is generally considered to be unacceptable for drinking water, it'd be too staining and taste issues. That's why well five has never been placed online as a main production well, hopefully run up once we piggyback with our other wells. And so, until such time as six comes online, or whatever we decide to call the new well, with iron treatment, we're in a slightly vulnerable position as far as pumpage is concerned. And that goes along with any sort of contamination that might occur with those two main production wells with one and four. Being forty feet deep and not confined, there's always a concern that if there was some sort of disaster on the railroad, or, you know, some other contamination issue that would affect those wells, we would really be in a real tough position as far as providing our customers with the quality of water that they're used to receive. So, um, we really wanna emphasize that, uh, it's very important to get another well online with the appropriate treatment to provide us the redundancy we need. So that we can continue to provide that great, good, safe drinking water that we've been, been able to, uh, produce. Our other horizontal or our other vertical assets are really in pretty good shape. We just received our well pumping engine reports back from Peerless Midwest. All of our wells, motors, everything looks to be in really good condition. Our water towers, uh, really good condition. The coatings are holding up well from about five years ago. Next year, we'll take those out of service one at a time, do an interior coating evaluation to see where we're at with that. But towers appear to be in really good shape. Wells, pumps, motors appear to be in really good shape. As you can see here, the Achilles heel of our system is the distribution system in the older parts of town. Large percentage of our distribution system is approaching a hundred years old, or has exceeded a hundred years old with respect to the horizontal assets, those big water mains and water services. The expected life expectancy of, uh, Dr. Line pipe or cast iron pipe, as this is, is between eighty and ninety years. So large portions of our distribution system have already exceeded their expected life and are continuing to age. We had a service line break on Lake Street last Sunday. Galvanized iron pipes probably been underground since at least nineteen twenty-six. Of course, that's what's going to happen in increasing frequency going forward. Until we replace those aging, unfortunately. In addition to that, we have the, uh, lead copper, lead service line replacement requirements that have been placed on this in the state of Michigan. Large portions of that system that are in that hundred-year-old category are also going to contain lead boost next to the water main connected to the galvanized iron pipe. And the state has given us, uh, eighteen and a half years now to replace all approximately six hundred of those in our distribution system. That's part of those corridor projects that are on the backside of the plan that Prime Newhoff brought to us three or four years ago. You know, we've got the interceptor up front, we've got the downtown project up front, and then subsequent to that, we start up front street. Chippewa, Cuyahoga, Detroit, Lake, Smith, Road. All of those portions of town that are in the oldest portions of our distribution system are gonna be affected by the lead service line replacement requirement. And it's not even on the front end of what we're planning to do, so we have got to make a priority, uh, of infrastructure replacement. And it's gotta start next year to avoid, I don't know what this is gonna do with us, but the clocks tick. It started last January. We're at eighteen and a half years left to replace those lead service lines, and thus far, we've done one, and that was last night. So that's kind of where we're at with our department. Um, great water, great vertical assets, but our horizontal assets are an issue. And it's gonna be a big mountain climb. Um, we cannot wait to start on this. It's got to be at the forefront, for our focus time as a city, in my opinion, so. Yes.
It's gotta, starting to put together a plan, so knowing we have eighteen and a half years, right? Seems like a long time, but it's, it's gonna move quick, right? Have we started to look at what that, the numbers look like and what, how that fits into eighteen and a half years?
Well, that's all part of that capital improvement.
Right.
That we're supposed to be moving on, was brought forth by Prime Newhoff and, uh, Andy Campbell, financial.
Yeah.
We're supposed to be able to cover that, um, but we gotta get started.
Yeah, 'cause I think to our marks, and we're really looking at your team to establish that plan with those teams and bring it to us, so we can start taking action on it. I think everyone up here wants to say, yeah, we wanna replace those lead lines. We don't wanna be the next Benton Harbor.
Well, so let's make a distinction real quick between us and Benton Harbor. Benton Harbor is a surface water treatment facility. We're a groundwater treatment facility with very, very hard water. So our water, in essence, protects us from those lead boost lines. The chemical composition of our water means that A, it's not aggressive, and B, it actually coats the interior of pipes with a, a calcium substance. That in a lot of cases, the water doesn't even really make contact with those surfaces, so. We're fortunate in that our source of our water protects us in a way that Benton Harbor doesn't. With surface water, you have very minimal hardness. The water is by nature more aggressive because it's chemical, chemical that makeup. So we're in good shape there. Our lead and copper testing results over the years have been very good. We've not had an exceedance. Uh, our last round of testing was last year, and everything came back. I think our highest intact on lead was less than a third of a regulation requirement, so.
That's great.
So we're in good shape there, you know? Um, it's just that those lines are gonna continue to fail, you know, 'cause they're made out of galvanized iron. And we're mandated to get those out of the ground, basically.
So the well side of that conversation, is that the one that's budgeted in the upcoming project, in their well, in there? Is it the same well that we need to add that you referenced early?
Yes, yes.
So we're, we got the well piece planked, so there's good, we'll have additional good source of water.
Yeah, we, we, the new well and the iron removal to treat that well and well five is part of the plan for, not next year, but the following year.
Okay, moving forward.
Yes. So that'll give us the redundancy that we need to feel safe with our source water.
We, we wanna replace those lines. Well, I think, I think to that point, I think where I was going with that is that I was curious if you had something laid out in your perspective, in your knowledge base, I, I. Then, then you would, and it doesn't have to be concrete, I mean, we expect an answer now, but I'm, you, you had made a very pointed point that we need to get, will we? I'm curious, like, are you looking at going, okay, we need to do five hundred a year? I know that's, I'm just putting, I'm. I know that's, I'm just putting, I'm not saying that's a concrete number, but.
No, so we have, we have approximately six hundred thirty. We estimate six hundred thirty like this, so. So, over the course of, you know, eighteen years by now, it's not that daunting a task. But it's just, here's, so that is just a small component of the projects. Because like I said, take a look at Detroit, right? What are there probably, sixty to seventy-five houses from the high school to Forest Street? I don't want to be the guy that drills sixty to seventy-five one-inch holes in a four-inch water main and spitting the ground since the nineteen twenties. That is a disaster waiting to happen. So, we have to not only replace the surfaces, we have to replace the water mains. They're under the streets, the sewers from the nineteen thirties. The storm needs to be upgraded. That's the crux of the problem is it's just, it's not just those lead service lines. It's the mains that they're attached to and the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer, and it's all buried under the roads. So, that's where this becomes this monumental mountain that we're talking into. And that's, you know, if it was just replace forty services a year, yeah, it's gonna do an upper on the roads, but that's conceivable. The problem is the quality of the mains that you're going to be trying to tap into with one-inch water taps. You know, I've heard stories on South Redmont Trail when they replaced the water main there in the eighties or early nineties, that when they actually took the dirt out from around the water main, the system pressure would shoot the corpse out. The dirt was what was holding the corpse in the water. You know, if we're looking at a situation like that in those other parts of town, there's no way we can tap those mains. So, I mean, that's, that's the crux of the situation that we're facing is it's not just lead service line. It's everything else that goes along. Two other things that are on my agenda we had. Question come up a lot in the last year for tap fees for waters. And nobody who's here could remember a time that we had tap fees or what they were or, and I think it's just due to the lack of construction that's taken place here prior to the last couple of years. There was kind of a forty-year hiatus under this sort of building or anything that took place in town. Yeah, no, trust me. So, whatever the, the process was for tap fees, things of that nature had kind of fallen by the wayside. But the question kept coming up because we're having such a surge in construction, what are your tap fees, what are your connection fees? You know, every other town charges these, what are yours? And, and we didn't know. A couple of weeks ago, Jill found a form that I updated in a file folder somewhere at the front end of City Hall that had outdated rates for things like sprinkler meters, new house meter kits, tap fees for water, connection fees for water, tap fees for sewer, things of that nature. And so, basically what I did was take that aside and update our vendor prices on meters, meter horns, radio transmitters, things of that nature, which we sell to the customers at cost, you know? We're not making a profit. If you build a house in Buchanan, we'll sell you a meter, meter horns and a radio transmitter at our cost each online. But as far as the tap fees were concerned, I reached out to three of our neighboring communities, being Niles, Marion Springs, the city of Richmond. And they all had various different programs, I guess, for what they charged for water taps, what they charged for sewer connection and things of that nature. By and large, a lot of them seem to be unnecessarily complicated. Niles charges for a sewer connection based upon frontage foot of your property along the road. So, if you have a very narrow property, you would pay a small amount. If you had a very wide property, you would pay a very large amount for you to make this exact same connection for the exact same sewer, which seemed kind of silly. Marion Springs had a sliding schedule for water taps, which started off relatively reasonable, and then if you got into a three or a four-inch water tap, it'd be almost prohibitively expensive, in my opinion, to connect. So, I kind of aggregated all of their information, tried to make it simple so somebody like me could understand it. And what I came up with, you can see here, if you want to connect to existing water service, like what happened out on Shurpa Parkway, they installed the water main, they ran a tap to the edge of the road, it's there, it's ready for you to hook up to. Fee for that would be five hundred dollars. If you buy a lot that does not have an existing tap on it, or for whatever reason that existing tap is not sufficient, we have to dig down and install a three-quarter inch or a one-inch tapped water main, that would be a thousand dollars. We don't tap anything larger than one inch in the house. We hire people to come in and do bigger taps, whether it's inch and a half up to six inches or whatever. We would have city services come down and then that would just be charged at the rate of whatever the contractor charges us to install that tap. Sewer connections, any sewer connection to an existing lateral or main would be one thousand dollars. The city doesn't actually own sewer laterals. It is our ordinance. The city owns the main running down the center of the road, and then the entire lateral is the responsibility of the homeowner. So, that doesn't get the five hundred, one thousand split, that's a straight one thousand dollars, which would include the cost of the inspection by city personnel for your connection.
Scott, and you, so these are comparable to other, I mean, to bridge with Niles?
Yeah, absolutely.
On that lateral thing, after last, our last meeting, I wanted to do additional research. That seems consistent statewide.
Yeah, it's very.
It's not just a local thing. House actually had a great ordinance with a diagram on it, so, by listening, that's statewide. I, I think your rates are favorable and fair. I think go to Royalton where they're building way more houses than we are this year, I think it's like six thousand dollars. That's ridiculous.
I wanted to reflect the fact that the community invested in these assets prior to people moving into the neighborhood. But at the same time, I didn't want it to be prohibitive towards people that want to develop because obviously we want to develop, you know what I mean? And it's happening, so.
But we don't want to pay for it, so we need all the help we can get. So, what have we been doing in the last couple of years? We've run out of charging any kind of fees?
I've been here, it'll be ten years next week. And I don't want to be in charge of tapping that time. You've been here longer than I have.
Wasn't in charge of that, I was in charge for a minute. Hey Scott, right now versus a day to install one?
To install a water tap? It's a day's work, especially if it's under the road.
Yeah, how many guys?
Three.
Three's a comfortable group.
Because you're gonna cut the road, you're gonna remove the asphalt, you're backing down to the water main. Around the water main because you have to have clearance to attach the tap. Make the tap, make the connection.
Install the bars.
Spout in the box. So, I mean, it's, it's three guys per day with a backhoe and a vacuum truck.
I think maybe we should go three thousand. Don't want to be prohibitive. It sounds like maybe it's a bargain at that price.
Did anybody like to make a motion?
I'm going to approve the water sewer tap fee rate schedule as presented.
How's board?
County?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Alright, my last order of business is to present to you the people that we've proposed for our wellhead protection team. We're trying to restart our wellhead protection program after the two-year hiatus. Basically, it went by the wayside at the beginning of the pandemic. And now we're trying to rebuild it so that we can become active once again with our wellhead protection program. And so, what you see is a list of people who would be involved with that program. And it's, I've reached out to everyone who's not a city employee and confirmed that they're, they want to participate again. For the city employees, there's been a great deal of turnover, so we simply split present position into formal position. So, myself, obviously, I'm still here. Rich Murphy would take over for Deb. Heather, obviously, would take over for Bill Marx, Michael would take over for JT. Larry Willard with the Marion County Health Department, I talked to Larry today, he agreed. Tim Westner's on board. Craig, obviously, is still here. Dick Chubb is eager to get going, so is Angel Whittle with the schools. And for those that you don't know, we go into the seventh grade classrooms normally on a normal year. We go in and talk to the kids about aquifers, wellhead protection, source water protection. One day in the spring, the kids have a good time, and we go in, we explain how wells working and we build wells out of little, like, root beer floats. Right, so your straws, the wild pipe, and your ice creams, the protective barrels.
Craig Miller actually brought us, he gets milkshake, I don't know what you.
That's the same thing, yeah. So, so we go into the middle school and Angel's our liaison there, she's a seventh grade science teacher. Mindy, obviously, is still here. Ashley Regal is graciously agreed to sit on the board as a township resident. And then, great news, Kelly Hahn is back with Michigan River Water Association, no longer with Fleyce and Vanderbrink, which makes their participation in this program basically free. Fleyce kind of expected they're having the grant to just go to their, their desires, whereas now the full, if we, if we reach out for that, grant, the full amount of that money would come to us. So, that's a good deal, like we're with Kelly, she's created her job and economically it's more beneficial for us with her back and we're a water seller. Those are the, our, our proposed members of the committee and hopefully we can get that on track and have a meeting before too long and go back to our quarterly meetings and go back to stuff with the grants like what you saw at Thrill on the Hill a couple of years ago where we had the, the pity bags for everybody and, and the models that we provided for the schools, the groundwater model and the surface water model that we were able to donate to the schools several years ago. So, we're eager to get back to those types of programs. Great. Does anybody like to make a motion?
Mrs. Money, I'll move to appoint the members of the wellhead protection committee as presented.
Thank you, as our support. House support, you have a roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
Here.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, moving on to item asked, we can a building authority?
So, myself, Heather, and Rich all met last week to approve a resolution that was asked by Roger. We then, well, Heather then created a different resolution for authorizing the insured building authority bonds. We decided not to move forward until we have the majority vote from the city commission. I'm looking forward to sign our resolution for the building authority, does that make sense?
I know.
Sorry. So, we, as the building authority, were given a resolution to sign, along with mayor. We did not feel comfortable making that decision because it was about the bonds and the issuance of the bonds. So, then we instead created another resolution for you guys to say, we're not going to take any action until you tell us.
Our resolution was that our authority will take no action until it is approved at the city commission level.
So, the only thing we're improving tonight is the fact that we know we're going to go out to bond, but there's, there's a dollar amount yet. It's just the fact that we're giving the city authority to pursue the bond, correct?
There, so I have Andy Campbell on speed dial, he said that he was willing to answer questions like that, so if you guys will bear with me, I'll get him on the line.
Heather?
Hi, Andy, this is Heather Grace, I've got you on speaker at our city commission meeting. We are at the portion of our agenda where we're discussing the bonds and there was a commission question. Our mayor, Denison, was asking whether there is a dollar amount tied to the resolutions that are on there agenda for this evening, the ones that were put before our municipal building authority.
Uh, yes, maximum of five.
So, it's, it's a cap of five million, but does it mean that if they approve it tonight that they have to go for the full five million? Or it's just that's a maximum cap, they wanted clarification on that?
That's just a maximum cap, we'll issue what the city wants to in terms of, uh, a proven amount at a later time.
So, at a, at a past meeting, I thought there was concern about when they went out to sell the bonds, that we couldn't basically return the money after we had applied for it, so what am I missing here?
Can you repeat that, I didn't get that.
Um, he, this was Commissioner Swam was questioning. He said that he thought he had understood from a previous meeting that once the bonds are applied for, that we can't return the money. So, he's, he's basically inquiring, if we approve the five million cap tonight, are we obligated then to borrow up the, the five million? Or is there some mechanism by which they could decide to have a lower amount? What does that look like?
Uh, the bond amount isn't set until we go out for sale technically and for sure, once we do the sale. Because the, the building authority resolution hasn't been adopted yet, we're still probably about a month or two off from sale. So, uh, the sale's probably gonna be, uh, I would guess sometime late July at this point. So, we're still a month or two away from meeting the actual, the final, final amount.
So, why do we need a dollar amount in there tonight then?
Did you hear the question, Andy?
No.
Commissioner Swam is asking why they need a dollar amount in this particular resolution this evening?
Uh, our resolutions have to have maximum parameters or the actual amount. So, we're doing maximum parameters until we figure out the final amount.
And that can always be increased as well as decreased?
Can that be increased as well as decreased?
Uh, you can, you can decrease the amount, but unless you change the resolution or adopt a new resolution, we wouldn't be able to go above the five billion if you adopt that.
Should we be adopting a new resolution anyways? I'm trying to understand that process here.
So, as part of the process, is there another step? You mentioned in July we'd be going out for the sale. So, would there be another resolution that they would be looking at in July that would set the exact dollar amount? Or what is that proportion of the process to?
Uh, no, I mean typically, no, it's up to the commission if they want to, but typically, um, Heather and it might, it would probably be Heather and the mayor would be allowed to set the final amount on behalf of the city as authorized signers. So, the city, through the building authority, will send authorized signers to sign the documentation and they have the, the authority to set the final farm out.
So, would it be appropriate if, say, Mayor Denison and myself were to just assure the public and the commission that we would not say if they're wanting to weigh in, which it sounds like they are and I understand why, assure them that we would not do so until they have another vote to authorize us to do so? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, the commission, if this stuff doesn't move forward until the authorized signers or the commission does some sort of action. So, yeah, I mean, if they want to just give you the, the direction, then you can't sign paperwork until we authorize an amount via the commission, then that's fine.
Isn't, isn't that what we just changed it to? Like you said, you had to change the resolution.
Yeah, so, um, to summarize, Andy, we, our last municipal building authority meeting, which was our first and only thus far, we actually as a group passed our own resolution indicating that we would not take action until there was city commission approval. So, I would think that that likely achieves that goal, does that seem to you like that would be the case?
Uh, you're getting at the legal stuff that I, I mean, that's. Uh, you're getting at the legal stuff that I, I mean, that's a good question for Roger.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds like that's the correct action, but I, I can't give you the full legal opinion without deferred to them.
Okay, that makes sense. And for what it's worth, for the commission's purposes, I personally would not sign anything until the majority able to forgive yourself.
That's right. It sounds like we have what, I mean, already some of you guys' defense. My own just about to miss something.
Yeah, I mean, based on the resolution we passed, that was our best effort to try to make clear that that's the attempt, is that we're not going to take action without majority commission approval.
Okay.
I think if we approve this resolution, then when the final number comes, then we'll come back and, and ask for approval before it's official.
Correct. Before Mayor Dennison and myself sign, this matter will be back on the public agenda, asking the city commissioners to vote.
This, this just keeps the wheels moving.
Correct. This is the next step in the process that Andy and Roger need to finish preparing to sell.
And that's what the dollar amount is. They have to have a dollar amount.
That's a max cap.
Yeah.
If we can, real quick, this is, um, this is to continue on the process because the, the city has to, through the building authority, because the building authority is the issuer at the direction of the city. The city has to apply for the bond issued through the Department of Treasury. So, um, this process has to be done in this way for max parameters and everything early because, uh, we have to apply directly to the issued Department of Treasury to get approval to issue the bonds. So we have to adopt all the resolutions and everything upfront, get approval from the Department of Treasury. And then if the commission wants to do a final approval before, before sale, that's perfectly fine. But we need to have everything adopted and shown that everything is approved before the Department of Treasury will, um, even consider approving the bond issue on their end.
That makes sense to me, right? For public clarification. We just have some differences of opinion on how much that bond should be, which is why all the questions came up. That's all.
Any other questions for Andy while we have him on the phone? Can we, yeah? Thank you, Andy.
Yep. Okay, talk to them in five.
Okay, Andy, we'd like to make a motion to approve res- the resolution.
Mayor, can you make the, the motion to approve the, uh, building authority, to approve that resolution? Sorry, it's, it's actually the building authority's resolution.
But because of that resolution we passed, saying we won't forward without commission approval, we need your authorization to pass it. I know that sounds circular.
So this is your resolution.
We, we need your permission to pass our resolution.
So we say we.
Because we didn't want to ask without your permission.
The, the proper motion is, I move to approve the building authority to pass resolution two zero two two dot zero five slash zero zero two as presented.
Okay.
Okay, is that a motion or a question?
That was a motion.
Is there, is there support?
I support.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Harris.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. I think we're on to item ten, unfinished business, reconsideration of ordinance, twenty twenty-two oh three four thirty, date IPMC adoption. Correct?
Correct. And this would be a first read. We did previously have a first read, but the first read, we initially had some blank spaces. Those have now been filled in. Um, it was just a few spots that were governing how many days notice people would have for various offenses.
Okay. Do we like to make a motion on that?
Sean, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two zero two two dot zero three slash four three zero international property maintenance code adoption as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support. Can we roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Harris.
Okay, uh, city manager, do you want to talk about the?
Certainly. My intention is to have a final budget proposal before the commission during our next meeting on June twenty-seventh. It would be, um, an amendment to what's been previously approved. In furtherance of that, we do have a meeting scheduled with myself, our new treasurer, Deb, and Commissioner Swam, coming up later this week. If anyone would like us to expand that, to have a full budget work session, I'm happy to do so. So I just wanted to take the temperature of the commission at this time, see if anyone else wanted me to schedule that. Um, if so, I'll be happy to do so. And if not, we can just discuss it during the June, the June twenty-seventh meeting.
So does anybody else want to attend it? Any comm- commotion on, on, on? More than Mary or, but otherwise, it doesn't like to be there.
Okay. It's two.
It's on the twenty-seventh.
No, that's a standard meeting. So if you want to go to the budget work session, that was gonna be more of.
We were looking at once, Wednesday at three P M.
Wednesday at three. We're scheduled for that already.
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
Yeah, fifteen, June fifteen and three P M.
Actually, if you, do you have enough time to even notice that we have a re-?
We do.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's, we're just going through the edits to the budget that will ultimately come back in front of the full commission for discussion.
Is the date on it?
Yep.
Uh, Wednesday.
Wednesday at three, fifteen.
Just Wednesday.
Just Wednesday.
June fifteen. Yep, June fifteen, three P M.
Here you come.
I think so.
Okay, I'll go ahead and notice that.
Do we need to make a motion to authorize?
No, just to that. And if you would like, um, I can just jump right to contract authorizations. Um, I'm asking the city commission to consider authorizing me to sign the following pending contracts. Following the recent review of site contracts by the city attorneys, A is the Bergman contract, where the architects for the DPW building. B is the A V D, who is construction managers for site buildings. And C, Brian and Newhall, as earlier discussed, they are the engineers for the infrastructure projects for water and sewer, as well as the twenty-three, twenty-four redesign and reconstruction of Front Street. So my request is authorization to sign all three contracts upon, uh, the recommendation of the city attorneys, one of the other finalized.
Do you have any questions? Would you like to make a motion?
Sean, I'll make the motion to authorize the city manager to sign the contracts with Bergman, A V D, and Brian and Newhall as per the commission's recommendation.
Thank you. Is there support?
Not support.
Can we roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
All right, moving down to new business, Moose Park, you're on for Thrill on the Hill.
And actually, that item A and B were both, um, removed from the agenda at the top of the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Not being intentional.
So we're down to communications.
We are. Got it?
None whatsoever.
All right, now this time I'll hold it up for public comment of non-agenda items only. Would you like to make a public comment? Would you like to make a reading of public statement in a minute?
I don't need to go all the way over there. Norma, three oh four North Oak. I have two I would like to speak to you and city personnel regarding what I have heard tonight to see if we have our priorities in order for us, the residents. Second, I have filed agreements with Comcast. I will be receiving, I hope, who just, uh, quit having Channel Seventeen. And I also have another committee who is willing to participate in paying for it that I need to have some information to share. So that's where I stand right now.
Thank you, Norma. Anybody else want me to make a public comment?
I'm also on the board at, at, uh, Buchanan Area Senior Center. And at the moment, I'm not pleased with my fellow colleagues. But, uh, thank you for holding to your guns for what you should, and I appreciate it.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Can I ask for a lollipop? I thought I did really well tonight.
You may have a cookie.
Moving down to the executive cabinet. City manager?
Yes, I wanted to thank the public for, um, braving a storm to join us this evening. We had some lively debates, and I think we addressed some tough issues, but we covered a lot of ground. So I thank everyone for their input and feedback. I do want to share, uh, coming out shortly, the downtown business owners and others in the downtown area will be receiving a communication from our police department informing them of those changes in parking fees that the commission approved recently. So that will be going out, and everyone will be receiving that, so they're aware of that change that will likely effectuate, which will be very soon. Um, I also wanted to update and thank Norma, um, for your communications to Comcast. We did actually get another Comcast from out here the other day, so they are still trying. They still haven't fixed it. But they assure us that they're still looking into it and providing assistance. So thank you for your advocacy, Norma. I appreciate it.
I hope they contact me because I have several.
Yep.
And someone that would want it.
Yep, I hope they do too, Norma. So thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time.
Commissioner Weeden?
Uh, just to say, welcome to Deborah Perez and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Commissioner Swam?
I have a few questions tonight, so welcome to Deborah. So one of my first questions is actually for you. We're seeing more and more of the rate increases industry-wide, just talking about this landfill. So great opportunity for us to just check and see what the rates are out there. I know there's groups just drooling over deposit money right now, so I'd like to kind of see where we stand on some of that. Second item I had was, who is our number two in charge of the mainstream program once Ashley's on leave?
Um, so at this point, we have not designated that person. They're having conversations internally as to what that will look like.
Okay. My public service question that came up from a few residents this week, more of a comment, just questioning our scheduling on why we're on four pence. Doesn't need to be answered right now, just so you're aware. I got a few questions this week. I'm, uh, don't have an answer as to why we schedule that way, so I was, like, worried of recall. So I'm sure there's a good reason, just it came up a few times, so I figured I'd address that. Uh, I had some interesting, um, discussion with our auditor plant related to some of our charges recently. And we had some recommendations for some commissioner committees getting established. So I think that's something we can talk a little bit more offline, kind of to help with our internal communication so we can accomplish some things. But like, I'm sure there's a bunch of different ways, but I kind of look at the landfill model as something you should at least consider. That kind of helps in communication, I think. And last but not least, I was really, really impressed by the tree friends tonight. I mean, incredibly impressed, really, to their organization, how thorough they came. They had a plan. They talked budget, execution, working internally with groups, like, that was a standard that, I mean, I know it takes time, but wow, that was great. I think about them every day when I drive down Elizabeth Street, West Elizabeth Street, is the nicest street candy in the entire town. If you don't go down that road, just kind of go down that road one time. Granted, there's no power lines. But I, I was really impressed with their execution tonight, and wish some of them are still here to hear that. But, um, I was really proud to see that and, uh, their willingness to want to work with our city. So, and the guys look like they're already great, so that was all I have.
I heard it.
Oh, you heard it. That's right.
Richard Allen? I would just like to welcome Deborah. With your money.
Deborah, welcome aboard. Appreciate it. Uh, I know this is gonna work out well for you. While I've got Mr. Baker here, uh, I want to personally thank him because I haven't seen him since really Memorial Day for the work that they did. Uh, and his crews did at not only the cemetery, but the work that they put into Front Street for the parade and, uh, just everything, uh, that they did to clean up the city for, uh, the Memorial Day parade we had. It was a big event, way bigger than we've ever seen. So thanks, Mike, for doing that. I'd have to agree with Patrick. I think the tree friends, when, when they showed up, they were ready for business, and they did a great job. Get a chance to thank Rich and all of the, all of the rest of them. Truly appreciate that. The same way with the, uh, with the Senior Center. I know they were a little disappointed when they abruptly moved out, but once again, I hope they understand, uh, what we as a group have to do sometimes, you know, and it's just not to make everybody warm and fuzzy. Sometimes you just gotta, you know, be the wet blankets, and I think, you know, that's what we turned out to be today. But, uh, hopefully, they'll come back and, and we can do something, you know, for that project that they're doing. It's a great project. Uh, I really foresee it working out well. Too bad that you can take advantage of it. But, uh, um, this past weekend, I got to listen to Mr. Dennison speak at our buck teams and reveal a lot of his, uh, past experience, or he went to school in Bumpville or somewhere like that. But it was really a great program. Thanks for the city of Buchanan for everything that they, they did to help promote that. I know that, uh, you know, as an alumni, I'm probably the only one here that gets to go after forty years. But, uh, yeah, thank you for the city for doing everything, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And it's Bumpville, by the way.
Bumpville?
Bumpville.
Sorry. Yeah, that kind of reminds the French language.
No, we're for sure. Um, I'm gonna welcome our treasurer also. Welcome aboard. Uh, wish you the best of luck. Um, a couple of things. One of the things that came up this past weekend was, uh, some complaints about trash downtown. And I, and I just, as busy as our, you know, Patrick was telling me earlier that he came through town this weekend, and it was, it was a traffic jam. I mean, there was so much going on in town this weekend. We had, you know, the buck teams, we had concerts on Thursday, we had concerts on Saturday. We had, and there was just so much stuff going on, and there's so many people in town, I mean, that we may want to rethink when we're emptying garbage. Go ahead.
My guys actually came to me this morning about emptying garbage cans and said we need to do some weekends because they're, they're, Thursday, they're not. By Friday night, they're overflowing.
Right.
So, and downtown was hot this weekend. I mean, it was.
And I'm glad that you recognize that. That's all. I just wanted to make sure that I sent out a little reminder there that.
I have not had time to talk to Heather yet, but I literally was going to ask if we could put somebody on, uh, Saturday morning to do a trash run because you'd have the farmer's market going.
I think it's warranted. I think with as much foot traffic and, and people in town now.
Maybe more garbage cans too. They're pretty far apart.
There's not many. There, we may want to think about it.
But they are, we don't have any of the decorative trashcans that was king with the downtown streetscape, so, I mean, I'll put out the white barrels, but.
No, I think if we can keep them, you know, just pay close attention to maybe keeping them empty. I mean, I'd rather not have white barrels around, personally. But it, it may not, sorry, but it may not be a bad idea to get a little creative with additional ones that maybe look similar because with the additional people we've got, Thrill on the Hill, In Chippewa, Los Angeles, I know we're gonna do it that way. But this Saturday thing is not going to slow down. This is gonna, it's going to pick up, so.
No, I'm totally on board with coming and having them Saturday morning.
Okay.
Because nothing gets put in those trashcans until Friday night anyways.
Right.
So it's not like I can do it Friday morning, Thursday night, Friday morning, doesn't matter. Saturday morning is when they're full, especially when you have all the traffic.
Right. You're, you're already thinking about it, so that's good. Thanks, Greg. The, I, the only other thing I want to do was apologize to, uh, my fellow commissioners tonight for letting the meeting get out of hand. Um, I don't really care about Robert's rules, Dan. I like the fact that we have back and forth. It's the only time citizens get to talk to us. It's the only time we get to hear from them, so I like to, I like that. But I let it get out of hand tonight. I bothered to ask for that. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, everybody, for coming, for putting up with the weather, and hopefully nobody has any damage doing on. Senator, can we make a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion. Thank you. Is there support?
Can we roll call, please?
You want?
Yes.
I want to put you on the spot eight times.
Yes. Can you talk to the press camp?
Yeah, I'm talking to the cuss captain.
You gonna need a helmet today.